The town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
I'd like to call the Farmington Town Council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to begin tonight by offering congratulations to the basketball team at the high school, the boys' game, they're in the semifinals on Sunday night, so congratulations and good luck.
Final.
Finals, excuse me, finals, for Sunday night, so, good luck, yay. So with that, I'd like to ask if there was any public comment, and if there is, please come to the podium, you have five minutes, and state your name and address. Hearing none, we'll move on, to consider and take action on the budget.
Okay, before we get started, so, you want to just kind of go through the process again?
Sure.
For tonight? For tonight, so, we're going to start on the operating side of the budget, we have all the departments coming in, we have dinner coming sometime around...
6:15.
6:15, so we have dinner coming in at 6:15, so we'll break for that. Last year, we've gotten through quite a bit of this or all of it, and we are prepared to do some of Saturday's work, the debt and revenue and some of that, if we have time to do that tonight, too. If not, that's what we'll start again on Saturday. We usually go by tabs in the book, each tab, and then what we've done in the past is we'll tentatively approve the section, if someone wants to come back to a certain page, we usually make a running list of those pages, and then at the end, we'll come back to it at the end. So that's what we've done in the past, last time, is that acceptable?
Sure.
Is that what we'd like to do?
Sure.
Okay, and we're going to start with the registrars, and...
Chief Malanson, the registrars are in general administration from now on.
So registrars are in general administration, and I can try to find the page for you.
Page nine.
Page nine. We break them out, because sometimes they come to the meeting to talk, but they're not going to be coming today, so, we do sometimes break them out, but they are part of the general administration account. As you can see, their budget has gone up, they are, overall, this account has been increased because of the increased cost associated with the likely presidential primary in May of 2020. So their budget usually goes up one year, down one year, up one year, down one year, depending on how many elections we're going to have, but I think that they are expecting some primaries and some different things to occur, so, their number has gone up because of that.
And I would expect that that would probably cover the few that we have right now, the special election we had already, and we have one coming up, which isn't a big one in our town, it's a small portion, but...
That's this year's budget.
I mean, this year's, right, right.
Yeah, this year's budget, yeah.
But I just wondered if that was, if we were okay with that.
How are we doing in their budget for this year, Joe?
They should be okay.
They should be okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know if you have any questions on the registrars' budget?
Questions?
Yes.
Just a quick question, so you might have just explained it, but the professional services going up from the revised budget of about $6,000 to $9,000, is that directly related to the presidential primary, or is that...
No, the professional service account includes software programming for election events.
Software programming, okay.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah, just so I can just confirm things, what Joe just said, so, based on the financial statements, we have about $38,000 left, approximately?
I'm not sure which, where are you getting it?
That January's...
Yeah, well, yeah, as of January, yeah, as of January, you did, yeah.
And that, that's enough to cover this year's election, okay.
Yeah, there should be two more elections, the special election for that small portion of Farmington, plus the referendum, and unless you have another, unless there's another referendum, if there's a second budget referendum or an additional referendum after that, you won't have enough money for those, but we do have enough money for the special election and for the next referendum.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then, motion for tentative approval, page nine.
So, second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay.
And the next is the police department, and Chief Malanson's here, and come on up.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
The police department pages are...
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Thirty-one to forty-one. So, basically, the police department is a flat budget, there's really no new initiatives in, in the budget. There was some requests from, for additional personnel, but we did not, we were not able to fund that. And I'm not sure if you have any particular questions, but it's really a maintenance budget, so, if you have any questions on any of the accounts?
Go ahead.
What were the requests for additional personnel?
The chief had requested four additional officers, which is quite a bit of officers. Some of you will remember from last year, and then some of you do will remember from way back, we run a very, very tight shift, not tight shift, what is it?
Staffing.
Staffing levels, that's the correct words, and we have debated back and forth whether or not we wanted to add additional officers for the staffing levels. In the past, we haven't done that, or haven't requested, because one officer won't really change the staffing levels, because it's a 24 organization, you need a bunch of officers to do it. And when we've analyzed it between the overtime cost and the staff, it hasn't really made much of a difference, and our workers and our police department really like the overtime, and so, we had, basically, have said, we would keep it at that staffing level. We've been finding, and Paul has been talking to me about it, is that, I think, it's a different culture, maybe, different culture, our officers are younger, they're not as interested in working as much overtime, I think the other thing that's happened is, as you all know, the tremendous amount of road jobs and work that's been taking place in Farmington over the last couple of years, and we, are, part of our policy is that on main roads, that you need police officers on the main roads, so there's been a lot of overtime, and a lot of overtime that's been forced overtime for officers that have to come in. So, you know, Paul and I just talked about it, and that thinking about, is it a time to start looking at increasing the staffing levels to do, have more staffing? The other issue that we have is West Farms Mall is a very busy place, and we have an officer there Monday, what?
Five days.
Five days a week, and the thought that maybe we need someone there more often at the mall, the mall does supplement the, the officer there, but it is a really busy place. So, Paul has, had requested the four additional officers, which would then reduce the overtime and do some different things, but obviously, having four additional officers is a, a big, big way to, one time to do it in one year's budget. If we were interested in doing that, and we're still, would be analyzing it, we'd think about, you know, maybe doing two and two, or something along those lines, because the budget, it's very difficult to do four positions in one year. So, with the budget target and the different needs of the town, we basically said that we're not going to do the officers.
On the patrol page, it says there's currently 22 patrol officers, and the proposal is for 21.
Can you give me the page number?
Thirty-two.
If you look on page, so you're talking on page thirty-two, patrol officer went from twenty-two to twenty-one.
Yes.
If you look on page, the next page, thirty-three, you went from seven to eight, so it just shifted. Last year, we did a reorganization in the police department for savings, and we changed some things around, so the officer moved.
Other questions? CJ?
Just page forty, under communications, I think we addressed this previously, but I just wanted to recap it, the equipment and repair and maintenance, jump there.
Page forty, equipment, repair and maintenance?
Third from the bottom there, yeah. I think we were talking about the radios that needed to be repaired, because they were going to change what they use statewide.
So, the reason that the department request was higher, but you funded in the capital budget, budget, some communication upgrades, so we were able to then reduce that amount, and, actually, I have one of the new portables, and we were able to get the new portables from there.
CJ, you said that we reduced the number, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, now, I thought you said raise the number, yeah, so we went from eighteen thousand to twelve thousand, because some of it was in the cap.
Other questions? All those in favor of pages thirty-one to forty-one, say aye. Oh, you need a motion for tentative approval, yes.
Tentative approval through page thirty-one through thirty-nine.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can I talk about one other thing?
Sure.
I'm sorry, one of the things I think you asked me about is that, was there anything that was missing in the accounts that I would have put in if it was not a 2.5% budget? And in Paul's budget, we do have that, so I wanted to make note that he did request a, an additional, was it one speed sign or two? One speed sign, you know the signs that are, you put in the neighborhood that stand and says, go thirty miles an hour, right, and it says, speeds...
Flashes.
Flashes, and so that's something that I think is tied to our goals and objectives with traffic, that we would have kept in the budget, which we did get rid of, so that was $5,000, so I just wanted to make note that that would have been something, if the target was a little bit higher, it would have been something that I would have put in.
Where was that, yeah, sorry, that was my question, was it specific area that it would go, or?
Let, we can try to find the account, where, where did we cut it out?
You're talking about the sign itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, they're, they're portable signs, so we move them around, but we get, obviously, numerous requests for those signs, and they also do traffic data, so, when they're not blinking and they're not, they look like they're not working, they're actually calculating for us the speeds and the volumes of traffic, so, we use them, you used to see the tubes that you went over on the roadway, if you've noticed, you really haven't seen those tubes anymore, because we use this to do data calculations for us, when, and speeds and that sort of thing, so that we can focus our traffic officers, the one who collects and moves these around, but then he knows when to focus, you know, the enforcement, because we know that between seven and eight, in this certain area, that's when most people are speeding, their volumes and that sort of thing.
And how many of them, how many signs do we have now?
So we have two right now.
We have two, and this would be at third.
Yes, which part of the budget?
Let's see, where did we cut it in?
It's patrol operations, there are the...
Patrol operations. So that would be page thirty-two.
Materials.
And materials and supplies.
No? Okay.
So where did, where did we reduce it? Oh, the department request, if you could see there, on materials and supplies, it was twenty-three, seven, and we reduced it down to fifteen thousand.
And it's page thirty-two.
Page thirty-two.
Okay, yeah, it would be helpful if, as we go through, you let us know about all of those, Kathy, because we can keep running, you know, people listening.
Madam Chair, may I ask, Kathy, you know, this list of things that you've taken out, I mean, obviously, we can write them in our books, but it would be very helpful at the end of the session to kind of have a list, so, for Saturday, so we can at least have that, so we all, we all can take notes, but I want to make sure that we all have the same answers, and, and we can have that...
Sure, absolutely, I was planning on doing that.
Yeah.
But I just, yeah, but I'll make note of that when we go along, too, just so you know.
Sure.
And it is something I think that, it, it's a, it's a quality of life issue, people really do like those signs, and we get requests for them quite a bit, so, and it's not that expensive, so, anyway, something to consider when we finish on Saturday.
Thank you. Yep?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, on the same page, it looks like the uniform request was a hundred and thirty-six thousand, but the proposal's a hundred and five thousand?
So what page?
Uh, thirty-two. Hold on one second.
That's because he had four additional officers in his budget?
Okay.
Yeah.
This is more general, but just while we were talking about that, if you, when you provide the sheet, it'll probably have it, but if you add up, like, this five thousand and the rest of them, what would it have been, like, what would the percentage increase have been, globally?
Hold on a second.
You said, if we had kept everything at the department request, request level?
Uh, no, not necessarily that, if, if you had just...
Well, I want to know that, too, at the end.
Well, that would, that's, my question is more, what would you have done if the target were higher, basically?
Joe, I think, and we can talk about it on Saturday, and we'll go through it, I think there's about, what I would call $50,000, because I'm not counting people, so, Paul's people, I'm not counting, but other than that, I mean, there's other people in the budget, but I think around $50,000, you're going to hear what I, tonight, so if you add $50,000 to what we have now, Joe, what would that be for a percentage?
It wouldn't move it down, it would, it'd probably be, you know, 2.55 or something.
2.55, okay.
2.56, something like that.
All right, thanks.
I think that's it?
Just one quick question, on page thirty-one, administration, full timeline, so I noticed last year, we had, our revised budget was 433,000, and the estimated 12-month actually came in above that, at 449,000, so I see why you're requesting a higher number of 444,000 for this year, but what was the, what was the difference there, that we ended up going over budget on that item last year?
I don't, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, again, if you remember, that we put our salaries in another account, and then they all get moved into the account during the year, because the kind, things aren't settled, is that the reason why, Joe?
Yeah, there's, actually, there's, there's three reasons, one is what Kathy just said, basically, we, we budget everybody, anybody who doesn't have a contract for a place, we budget a flat salary, whatever their salary is, from that year, we just carry it forward to the next year, then they get their raise, and then we come to you at the end of the year, and you do a salary, you do a transfer to cover that. The second part of this, for this particular account, is there was a long-time employee who retired, and that, when they, when they left, they were paid out their accrued time, some vacation time they had, so that bumped us up a little bit. And then the third reason is, there's actually a, a union employee in this account, and the union employee's entitled to certain additional compensation, that, for example, they get paid off some of their vacation time, and things like that, during the course of the year, and that's also in there for this year, for the projection for this year. Next year's projection's just flat salaries for everybody, what kind of salaries would be, again, less, without raises.
Gotcha, makes sense, thank you.
Other questions? Yes?
Since you brought up the West Farms Mall situation, and how that works, can you give us a little more detail about, I think Kathy said they support...
Yep.
So, so, there was an agreement when they built the Nordstroms and put the addition on, they pay for the full salary of one officer and all benefits, and then 50% of the salary of another officer, and they pay that quarterly through the year, they also pay for his vehicle, the bike, his uniform, so they reimburse all of that for that officer. He works there five days a week, and it is the, we, I, the reason I proposed it and the backup that, of what I showed, was the amount of calls for service at the mall, and the amount of arrests that were at the mall, and so, based upon that, he is only there eight hours a day for 40 hours a week, but there are other demands, obviously, and it is going to be, one of the issues is going to be, it is not a very good schedule, he works every Friday and Saturday night, has Sunday, Monday off, and then works Tuesday, Wednesday, during the day, and then Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, so, it's not your optimal schedule to have to work every Friday and Saturday night, so there, so filling that, when this officer leaves that position, is going to be very difficult based upon that schedule, and I, we're going to end up having to change the hours, but really, the biggest part was the calls for service and number of arrests, there were over, I, I think the last count was over 300 arrests in a year, so, it is very, very busy, and they're not the simple, somebody stole a pack of gum right from the store, and, because nobody's arresting those people, right? These are people that are organized crime, that come up off the highway and steal coat racks, or just an amount of, they park in the fire lane, they run in, they grab a bunch of stuff, and they leave, and, and we track them all the way back to Florida, or New Jersey, or, you know, so it's organized crime, it's, there's a lot of credit card frauds, and it's amazing, pocketbooks getting stolen, you know.
Louis Vuitton.
Yeah, I mean, so, and, so, it's, we have a great relationship with the mall, and so, it's just really to kind of keep that going, and, and really give them the service, because it is, it is a big drain, when he is not there, every officer knows it, like, they check when they come in, if he's working, because they know that that's where they're going to end up for the night, so, anyway, so that was the...
Has, so follow-up to that, too, Beth, would be, and when it originally opened, we didn't have the number of stores, we've increased, Nordstroms wasn't there, and there were some others, I wonder, has there been any change made since the beginning, like, is the half since the beginning, or should we have a conversation about maybe having another half, which would give us two full-time people? I'm wondering if that's, you know, might be, and more people there, and, but more stores as well?
Yeah, I mean, so, they, we do have conversations, but their, their argument is the other way, that...
We should be paying for all of it?
That, no, that they don't want to pay, right, because, you know, I mean, they are a big taxpayer in town, and...
Yes, are large.
And, you know, so, so we do have, and that's why we, we really are responsive to them, but, you know, they do have, and, as you know, malls are, are, they're, you know, I mean...
They're serious business.
It's, and they're, some are closing, and so they're really, you know, they're trying to do what they can do also, but, and many of you probably have heard during the holiday season, right, there was a large fight at Buckland Hills Mall, ends up closing the mall down, if you shut that mall down during the Christmas season for one hour, if you can imagine the amount of money that those stores and those things that are lost on a global scale, so we really work well with them to ensure that those things, and that it just happened, I think, last weekend, again, another big fight at, at a different mall in the state, at Buckland, and so, we're very cognizant of that, and, and try and ensure that that, of course, you can never promise, but we do our best to ensure that that won't happen here.
Okay, well, thank you.
For the balance, delicate balance.
Anything else? Okay.
Just so I can verify, so it's pages thirty-one through forty?
I'll tell you. Thirty-one. Oh, that's thirty-one, or... Yeah, forty-one.
Forty-one.
Oh, forty-one.
Through forty-one, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Because the EMS services, the police budget.
Okay, I move to tentatively approve pages thirty-one through forty-one.
Second?
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
Welcome. Keep us ahead of... Windows Russell Arnold, and so, are we doing the public works, public works, highway and grounds and engineering? So it's pages forty-three through...
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four. What did I just say, forty-three...
Fifty-four.
Through fifty-four. So just an overview on the, the public works department, public works department had a 1.64% increase overall, it's a very maintenance type of budget, there's a couple of things that I just wanted to note, that I think that we were happy about, is that, in this account, and the reason why it was able to stay at 1.64%, is that this is the account that had the streetlight purchases, and we saved about $100,000 in this account by changing over and purchasing our streetlights, so, since we were able to do that, that really helped this account out quite a bit. We are really with keeping status quo, we're still able to keep our seasonal summer help, which are our four employees that come in and help out in the busy times, so, under our target, we were still able to keep, keep that, we are still funding our accounts, I think, at appropriate levels, meaning that we fund them on the averages, you know, because we don't know how much snow we're going to have, so we, what we try to do is five-year averages on a lot of those different accounts, and when things were really, really tight, we were not funding on five-year averages, we would be funding on the lowest end, and then we would get ourselves in trouble on some of those accounts, so, we now have those accounts, and I think I mentioned it last year, that these accounts are funded what we feel is appropriate, not that a five-year average could, you know, we could have tons of snow, and it could be way over, but, it's way better to be on at least the five-year average than be way below the five-year average, so we do have that. The other thing that I think is something to note, is that in the highway and grounds department, we are able to, because it's, with retirements and things of that nature, when the new people come in, we hire them at a much lower rate, and because of that, our overall salary account in that, in those, that division is very low, too, because of the fact that we have the same amount of people, but the salaries overall are less, because we, we fund them, they come in at entry-level rates instead of at the top level. So, again, I think in the highway and grounds, there's really no new initiatives, I do want to say that one thing that was cut in this account, that would have been in the account, is that we did cut the, how do you say it?
Shareos.
Shareos.
Oh.
Oh.
That the bike committee had requested, so that's $5,000, that of shareos, and that would, that would be in highway traffic control, but I'll keep track of that, but that is something that I think, that the bike committee has been looking for, and that would be somewhat of a new initiative that did come out of the budget.
I believe that was one of our targets for this year, also.
Yes, right, so, that was one thing.
And that's 5,000?
5,000.
And that would be, what page?
Highway and traffic control, let's see. Fifty. I think it was probably under materials and supplies, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so if you look on materials and supplies, the department requested 25,000, and we funded 20. And that's a good account to look at, Nancy, on page fifty, if you look on the electricity account, the department requested 219,000, and we, we, we reduced it to 102,000, that's part of...
That's for the...
Streetlights.
Well, it's good to know.
That's part of the savings.
Yeah, that's part of the savings.
And I just want to ask, I think it should be pretty good, but, on, it'd be under 47, how are we doing with our snow and ice?
Good, doing well, we're under budget on the overtime and on our salt.
Both?
Both.
Okay, because I know we've done a lot of tree work, too, you know, more than usual, which, so, but in, in that, it's still the snow and, so we're ahead of schedule, I mean, ahead of...
Yes.
So far.
Yep, we're doing well.
Forecast looks good.
Yes, yeah, exactly, but unfortunately, again, it's good for the public and good for the schools, but the storms, even though it doesn't seem like we've had very many storms, but they have come on the weekends and things like that, we are, they're more expensive for us, but, again, we are still under, we're definitely under our budget, which is good, but, when I found out, I was like, well, we have to be way, way under, because it doesn't seem like we've had any snow, but I forgot that they are, they have a lot of them have come on the weekends and Sundays, and it's, it's more expensive for us when they're on the weekends.
Other questions? Go ahead.
On page forty-nine, I have a question about environmental compliance, I know, so the catch basins are referenced here, I also know that there's a capital request, I think, for $50,000, is there, can you explain why the environmental compliance is in capital instead of in operating, because it seems like it's an operating and maintenance kind of expense?
It is, but, the environmental that's referenced here is for the industrial permit for the highway, specific, for the highway, and then we have it, also have an industrial permit for the WPCA, which is specific for them, the environmental code compliance is for the MS4 work, and based on that, we've had it in the capital for years, and so, if we don't spend it all, we don't lose it, it just continues on, and we weren't funding the environmental code compliance every year, because we would have money in there from the previous year, so that in turn...
But Kathy, wouldn't that type, does that fit into our capital policy?
Right. I think, Joe, correct me, I think if you're looking very much on the dollar amount, it probably should be in the operating budget. I think history had shown though, is what would happen is that because some of the expenses were getting larger and also we wanted to carry over the money because of year to year of what was going on, we kept it in the capital budget because we weren't funding it in the operating budget when we should have been funding it in the operating budget. And I think now, I think our philosophy is, is that the money is becoming more and more and that's why it's becoming, going into the capital budget. But again, if you were going to go and say, should that be in the operating budget? I think, again, it probably could go in the operating budget. It's just that when the operating budgets were at these, at some of these levels, we just weren't funding it or we weren't funding other things and so we moved it out. And we, I think, I, I think it's fair to say, we've done a better job of getting things back in the operating budget that should be in the operating budget or things, or things out of the capital that should have been, you know, in the operating budget. But again, some of these things have swayed back and forth because what would happen, not with environmental, but pieces of equipment, like and I think the fire department's behind us, we used to do turnout gear and we'd do six a year in the operating budget, but then it was too expensive in the operating budget and then we wouldn't do it for four or five years because we would get, we wouldn't be able to afford it in the operating budget and then all of a sudden we'd have to do two-hundred thousand dollars in the capital. And so then we decided to do more programs in the capital budget so we would be able to fund it. So again, I think if you said, let's move it into the operating budget, I think it would fit in there, but we, it's just historically we've kept it in the capital.
And I have one other question on page forty-four. Full-time, the full timeline, the department request was approximately two-point-one million dollars and the town manager recommended is two-point-two. So what's the increase?
There's salaries for the, when the instructions went out to the departments, we didn't have settled contracts with any of our unions. And after the instructions went out, the union settled. So we directed all our departments to just budget at the existing level and not at the new rates and then we would put the new rates in. This is one of the few departments that actually followed the direction, so you probably see this in other, you won't see this in too many other departments.
Is that Russ is doing?
Yeah, actually it was Russ's staff.
Everybody in my department.
Good team.
We follow directions.
Other questions?
Yes, Paul.
Jerry. On page forty-nine, for the highway and ground, street maintenance that Patty was on, what is the hundred thousand of professional services? Like what does that go towards?
For professional services?
Yeah.
That's our tree, mainly our tree trimming program. That's we.
That's the trees.
That's all the trees that we do.
About eighty percent of it's tree trimming.
Okay.
Tree trimming, tree takedowns, things of that nature.
Okay.
Other, yes?
And then on the same page, the overtime requested seventy-five thousand, the manager's budget is for sixty-one thousand five hundred. And it looks like the estimated for the current fiscal year was fifty-seven thousand. So can you speak a little bit to that?
Joe, can you speak to that one because of how we, why we took that one back?
Basically what happens with this account is it's used for call-outs. There's also, there's a four-hour standby every weekend and play gets overtime for that. There's call-outs, emergency call-outs, and then there's also overtime for, for when we're paving. And we have to have people come in, either before hours or stay after hours or work Saturdays for paving. And so we estimate every year based on what we, you know, based on how spending is going in the current year and how it was going in previous years and what our work plan is for the next year. If you notice, the estimate for this year is about fifty-seven thousand. We think, well, we're at thirty-eight at the seven-month mark. We figure we have fifty-seven by the end of the year. So we thought going up to sixty-one would suffice for next year. That's really what it boils down to. It's primarily those, those four-hour standbys, emergency call-outs and then the, the paving program. And we probably, this, and actually next year, we, depending upon how things go with the bond, you know, our paving program may get a later start than usual. So that would also cut back on some of the overtime.
One of the things Edward, we did this year, we took a really hard look at a lot of the individual accounts, each page, and what we did is that we really tried to realign the budget and that, look at everyone and what they've spent over five, six years and really go back and see what they're spending, what that, what the averages are, like, you know, because we never know what an average for the emergency callback, we don't do averages obviously on copy or paper and things like that, but I'm talking about like emergency call-outs and that type of thing. And we really tried to move money around in the individual accounts and say, okay, well, maybe we're, the overtime got changed, but you weren't spending money on professional services. So we, we didn't change, we changed money in accounts, but we didn't change too much the overall dollar amount of things. And what Erica just pointed out too is that, what Joe said with this overtime is, you know, we looked at, really looked at a lot of the three-year averages and to make sure that what they're spending on the overtime and tried to align the budget and hard look at some of these things.
Thank you.
Other questions? Forty-three to fifty-four.
I tentatively approve, I, I so moved to tentatively approve pages forty-three through fifty-four.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. All right, so the next one, which one?
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal. So what page is that?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Back in the.
Twenty-six? Yeah. Yeah, fire marshal is page twenty-six. This is basically a flat account at a two-point-four percent increase. One thing that I always like to point out in the fire marshal account though, is that if you can look at on page twenty-six, the hydrant charges, that, just so people are aware, that's our, what we pay to Connecticut Water Company, a maintenance fee for the various water companies to providing the water service to the town. It's not the water bill, it's the fee. But as you can see there, that's close to a million dollars that we're paying out. It's one of, I, if, I think it's probably our highest one-line item in the entire budget. So it's always important that we keep in contact with the water companies and what they're doing and what their rates are because a one or two percent or a three percent increase on those numbers are big dollars for us in the budget. So that's just something that I do like to point out, that that's an important number for us. Question, go ahead.
Yeah, just following up on that Kathy, so I noticed that you put in more than what they requested. Was there some information that, that was not available at the time that you, made you consider that?
Yeah, from the department request, yeah. Usually what happens is that we wait for the rates to come in, so Russ and the fire marshal try to put in what they know and then usually, unfortunately, it's higher than what it was the year before or the rate increases more than what we hope, hope it to be. And so then Joe and I adjusted at the end.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. And the next one? Tentative approval.
I tentatively approve page twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay.
If you could go to page forty-two, this is the building inspector account. This item, this account has gone up a little bit and why that has gone up is because in Russ's area, we did do some restructuring and reclassification of employees. In, one of, one of the things that we're actually proud of is that sometimes when we, we restructure a department, we use existing employees to keep people here in the town of Farmington and do different things. So we have a building inspector and then we have a deputy building inspector who's also a development inspector for us too. That can be a backup building inspector so you don't have to get another building inspector. And we did that a few years ago. And then the, on the other side, we have a zoning enforcement officer who also functions as a.
Engineering.
An engineering aide. So they kind of cross-train in the whole division. So one of the building inspectors now has become a full-fledged building inspector. And so we've increased his salary on that and that's why, that's why the account is up a little bit.
Quick one, what, what are the professional services in this bucket for?
Primarily software licensing, support and maintenance licensing for the software system.
For like building permits?
Building permits, online building permit system, yeah.
Thanks.
There's also some money there for specialty inspectors if there's, we need to bring in a structural inspector or something for different projects. We, we have a little, probably like fifteen hundred dollars for that.
A third, third party.
A third party.
Third party.
Other questions? Okay, all in.
I, I so tentatively approve page forty-two.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay.
We're going to do eighteen. This is our planning department and planning and zoning and zoning board of appeals. Couple of things just to note on this, these are really very flat accounts, but what has happened in these accounts, just give me one second. Yeah. Is that in, on page eighteen, the full-time payroll accounts to fully fund the position is a full-time position. If you remember our town planner, our former town planner for a few years was only working three, three-quarters of the time. It was only budgeted as three-quarters of the time, even though in the last year he was funded, he was working full-time. So now the numbers are upgraded to, to have it be a full-time planner, even though our planner was full-time, it just wasn't funded in the budget as full-time. It was only funded as three-quarters of the time, I think. And the other thing also is in the professional services account, this count has been increased to more accurately reflect the support cost of the permit system. I think that we only budgeted half. It wasn't budgeted for and so that was increased too. So in reality, even though the budget has gone up with the numbers, there's nothing really new in the account, it's just showing it more accurately.
Which system did you say that was?
This was the support, the permitting software system.
Permitting software, okay.
I tentatively approve page eighteen through twenty.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Brown tab in the back, refuse collection. So if you can see on the first page, you see the revenues and the appropriations. This is a different type of budget. It's not just expenditures, it's revenues and expenditures. We collect our waste fee. If you remember during the budget presentation, we're not planning on increasing the fees for this account. If you could see our revenues that we collect are one million, six-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and our appropriations meet expenditures. So it's a balanced budget. We do not plan on upgrading our fees. A couple of things that we have been talking about that I think it's a good opportunity to mention now is one of the things that we've been analyzing and talking about and of working, we're going to start working with our, our, what's that? Our collector.
Waste collection.
Waste collection. Is, we've been getting quite a bit of people to talk about having recycling on a weekly basis, not a bi-weekly basis. So that's one of the things that, obviously that costs more money to do that, but we've been working out with the accounts and to try to figure out how to do that and, but I think that's something that we're going to be looking at over the course of this year to upgrade that, having once a week recycling instead of once every two weeks recycling. So that's just something that we, I think is important to mention, that's something down the, in the future.
Go ahead.
The tip fees are, is volume increasing? Is it the price per ton that's?
Price. The disposal cost is going up.
And do we have, I don't think Connecticut's there yet, but I know around the country there are people paying for recycling and we're not paying. I know Farmington isn't?
Not yet.
Is it, is there, is it on the horizon?
I would say yes.
Do you have any?
I don't have a rate. It's, there's actually a meeting at CROG, I believe it's Monday. I don't know, Tuesday, when do we go to DOT Tuesday? Tuesday, there's a meeting at CROG about that very topic. So we'll be getting more information to come.
So what was it, in the old days, you got paid for recycling and now in the new days, you're paying for recycling?
Start, yeah.
And, sorry, going back to the waste form, is Farmington's volume plateaued? Is it going down?
We, we're steadily going down. Our recycling, when we went to the automated garbage, automated cart pickup went up and that's still, what it, we're going down and recycling's going up. It's a steady, slow rate. And I think as Kathy mentioned, the extra week of recycling will truly help that because I think what's happening is people's, people's habits are, have changed from the old sixteen or eighteen gallon, you know, bin that we used to have, then they just started throwing everything into the big ninety-five gallon. Well, now that there's still more to recycle, they're not really breaking it down as much, breaking the boxes down and doing, you know, recycling the way they should. So the box, the cart fills up and a lot of it streams over into the waste. So I, I truly believe that if we, once we get to that second, every week of recycling, our recycling numbers are going to go up again, go up at a more dramatic rate.
Kind of a follow-up to Patty's question. I know with like the garbage cans, some people, you can, I assume you can just buy a one-time cost to have an extra can and it doesn't cost extra for them, for them to pick it up every other week?
No. No, they would just pay the tonnage.
It's the same for a recycle?
Correct.
Would it be cheaper to just encourage people, like give them a discount on just, rather than go every week, just give them extra blue recycle bins? Or is that going to cost more, do you think?
There's the cost, there's going to be a big cost.
That's a big cost.
Yeah.
I think we'd be more so, people have been, not that it's coming anywhere soon, is almost switching and having garbage every two weeks.
Right.
That's, a lot of people have to mention that, is that they don't need the garbage once a week, they need the recycling.
Just flip them, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, then, you know, one thing is true. Now what are you going to do with the three bins in your garage or on the side?
Well, I always wonder what people do. I see them all the time and.
It's just, it's a lot of space, right? Not everyone has it.
Right.
But at the same time, there are towns, you can get four bins. A lot of towns in Massachusetts, they'll have a recycling bin, they'll have a waste, your trash bin, and they'll also have a yard waste bin. So, you know, they'll have, you throw your yard waste in it. So there's, actually, it's probably, you know, the way it's going to go is you're just going to have more of these recycling or more bins.
More bins, to separate things.
Separate things, right.
Well, and I think, I'm sorry. I, I think the way things, people are shopping these days, they order online, they're getting more packages at home. So it's not like the old days where people would drive to the store and buy their stuff. So I think the habits have changed in terms of how they're getting their, their goods at home, so.
That's more cardboard boxes.
That is. And it fills up those bins very, very, very fast, so.
Right. But, but it is something that we're very much looking at and seeing what we're going to be doing and we're preparing for that.
Any other questions? Okay.
I tentatively approve page sixty-nine through seventy-one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Sixty-nine or sixty-one.
Hi. That's it for Russ?
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, is he doing Westwood's or?
Oh, West, uh.
The golf course.
It's part of the highway.
That's on page, we went through it, we didn't go through, we went through the maintenance, Russ does the maintenance, Nancy is going to be, do the operations, she hasn't got here yet.
Nancy has the blue tab.
Yeah.
That's under page fifty-three, the maintenance of it, the maintenance of the course.
Were there any questions about page fifty-three? How it works now is that Russ, and it's under the highway and grounds, and it's just the, the maintenance of it, and then the operations of it is under Nancy Perrin. She's gonna be coming for that. Second? Thank you.
You?
Thanks. I think we have, I hope, Steve Hoffman. Come on up, Steve. Everyone knows Steve Hoffman, our.
Hello.
Welcome. Our fire budget is on pages twenty-seven through, twenty-seven through thirty. Fire department has a very tight budget at a two-point-one-six percent increase overall. It's very flat. It's maintaining services. We've been working with Steve on some things that I think, I'll take you to the account where the volunteers for, where we pay, pay or volunteer, the account, oh, on page twenty-eight. Professional services. As you know, our volunteers, we do have a pay-for-call when they do go out. That's the account that they are in right there. One of the things that, as you probably know, is that the fire service has changed quite a bit, and luckily, I think it's good that there's not a lot of fires anymore that firefighters go to. A lot of it's a lot of medical calls that they go to, and a lot of the medical calls, you know, in the middle of the night are very kind of small types of medical calls, and the volunteers are going out and doing that. And one of the things that we've been working on with the fire chiefs and with Steve is trying to get some of those different calls for service, that they don't have to respond to them. There's different ways, the ambulance company, the police department, the elderly housing complex. And we've been working on some of that because one of the things that is very important to us is that we continue to have a volunteer fire company, and that because it's much more, much more expensive than a paid one. It would be similar to a police budget, which is, what is our police budget? Three million dollars? Versus our fire budget? Six million dollars versus the fire budget? One point six. So again, it's based on the volunteers. It's a much more inexpensive way. And one of the things, though, that we struggle with is, is just that the amount of medical calls and calls in the middle of the night and things like that. So Steve, one, one of the things that we have changed recently that I think has been working out pretty well is, why don't you explain what that is?
The Alpha Omega?
Yeah.
So medical calls are structured based on priority, non-priority, and we have, they go through Omega, Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, Echo, and they're dispatched, when you call nine-one-one, they're prioritized based on whatever the questions are asked by the dispatcher and the answers to those questions, and then it gets prioritized and dispatched. So right now, Alpha calls get a fire department response, and Omega call is an ambulance-only response. Meeting with the medical director from Yukon and talking with the chiefs. We've looked at some Alpha calls that we can make Omega calls, which will cut down a little bit on those medical calls, non-priority medical calls that the fire department's responding to, and the ambulance will in turn respond on their own. So it'll just back off a little bit of the calls on the fire department's side. But they'll still get the medical service. But again, it's a non-priority, non-medical call, like a sick call or stubbed toe or something like that. It's no, the priority calls would still be a fire response.
So it is.
Well, that's great, because I know that people out there, you know, if something's happened and they've had a medical call and then they fire, you know, you, so.
Yeah, it's, again, it's one of the things that we're trying to do, is just try to look at different ways. And then Steve has been meeting or talking, and we're trying to work with some of these elderly complexes that, you know, that they have to have people on staff to do some of these things, that where our fire department should have to come and put someone back into a bed, you know, that should be the requirement of the service and some different things like that. But right now, one of the things that Steve and they've been working on and we've been doing, because we have such a great volunteer fire department, but again, it's a lot of, a lot of training, a lot of work to get up in the middle of the night and different things to keep our volunteers active and have different things that go on and that, to do some of these different calls and different things and not to burn the firefighters out. And Steve's been working on some recruitment drives and different things, trying to get cadet, cadets in early so then they can become firefighters and some different things. So it is, you know, volunteer firefighting is, you know, it's, I think we should, we're very proud of our volunteers, but realize the amount of work, and it is really hard to keep, you know, keep the volunteer system. And we do have, you know, a hundred and fifty volunteers, a hundred and forty-six, and about, how many of them are real, like active, active?
Probably about, interior-wise, eighty?
Eighty. So that's really great. That's a really good core group of people. So, but the budget is basically flat. And I don't, if you have any particular questions on it, I'd be more than happy to answer them. I'll have Steve answer them.
I just wanna ask, go a little further into the, talking to the buildings in town, the nursing homes in town. That was an issue last year, and it has been for a couple of years, of just having some positive response of hide, them having people within their own building to help do certain things that the firemen really shouldn't have to be going out for. So you've been getting some positive feedback on that, is that?
I've met with Mike D'Amico, so the area, that area's kinda gray in legislation. So we're trying to enact something for where these places have to have medically trained staff there. The new place that's just being built on Route Four, there's supposed to be some in there twenty-four-seven. We're hoping that person's medically trained, so maybe we can alleviate some of that aspect as well. But right now, it's gray. So try our best to get it before they get into town.
Right. One of the, one of the things that we, you know, it's, again, Beth, what you've said, like a balance on certain things, because we, we don't, we've been, Steve and then Mary Ellen before have gone to some of these complexes and asked them to basically do it, you know, get someone on staff, but we really can't force people, just like we can't force an individual to do different things, you know. But that said, there are different things that we could look at, and we've been hesitant to do it, is create our own ordinance or do some different things like that, or charge, you know, charge for the service. And we haven't wanted to do that, but we're trying to do different things. We're either state legislation or different things. But if we get to a point, which we've talked about, that we may have to do that, because you can't, we can't go to these elderly complexes, you know, that many times. It's just, we'd have to either have some charge for it or do something to make it, because it's just not fair to our volunteers.
Well, two things. We're paying, I mean, we'd be, our volunteers are, you know, they're volunteers, but they're also paid per call. And also the burnout that you talked about with them having to go to calls like that more often.
Right.
Which is something you don't wanna do. So, but good, I'm glad you're getting some positive feedback, and hopefully that'll continue.
Right.
Yeah. Just a couple of questions. The overtime was estimated for about fifty-five, and it's budgeted less than that. So is that some of the changes that you implemented? I mean, this year, it looks like we're estimating a fifty-five, and it's much lower, and I'm just.
I think it's because of what the actual expenses are for the overtime, so we, we cut it back.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, there's, we had a vacancy that wasn't filled until, a person left in May, and I guess we filled it in November, December.
October, November.
Yeah. So there's a lot of overtime because of that. And then another person was out.
I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then on page thirty, the auto repairs. The estimated twelve months is one-twenty-six to, and then we're moving forward, one-twenty-two. Is that, can you, are those repairs for the ladder truck or, like, what type of repairs are for that?
Some of those are for the ladder. We also had, we've noticed that from the treatment on the roads during the winters, doing some major damage underneath the trucks, it's rotting exhaust pipes, and we've had some major damage to bearings on wheels on one of the engines, and that was a large expenditure. The ladder as well, we had some problems with the turntable hydraulics, and there's a card reader in there doing the electronics that need to be replaced. So those all added up.
But this is the account where all the maintenance comes out of.
Okay. And then recruitment, I know that you guys had signs posted, so how did we do from a recruitment, you know, volunteer recruitments, I guess?
Oh, with the signs that are out there now?
Yeah.
So far, we've gotten around four members that have joined or in the application phase now, which is just by those signs. We have recruitment day coming up, April twenty-seventh, at the training facility. So we're using social media, trying to use the news and other media outlets to try to get the word out. Facebook, probably the most. But we're hoping that we get a good turnout for that. We can grab some more of the community to join. But those signs actually worked out well, three, we have four, I think, so far, so.
Definitely, that's really good. Thank you.
Is it in timely with our newsletter?
I put, I put in like three or four articles in our newsletter, so I took up some good space.
We know people do that.
Thanks. Questions, Paul?
For that, on page thirty, the auto repair and maintenance, if, if the ladder were approved this year, and you might have said it during Capitol, I just forget, how long until, how long are we still using the old ladder for? Till the end of two thousand twenty, by the time it gets built. So right, right prior to two thousand twenty-one, we'll be getting it projected. So at the calendar year? Yeah. So in January twenty-twenty-one, we would have the brand-new ladder, basically? If not before, a little bit before that. And then how much of the one-twenty is anticipated to be the ladder for this next fiscal year? For repairs? Yeah. I mean ballpark, just. Around thirty thousand? Like a quarter of that? Yeah. Thirty, okay. It seems that we've getting, having a lot of, again, we just replaced the turbo, and we replaced that five times. And it seems that every two to three years, we have to replace that turbo, and that's about a five-thousand dollar pay right there. So hoping that doesn't happen again, but. But, but you just, it's loosely thirty. Yeah, around there. And then on page twenty-eight, the professional services line for like three-hundred-and-seventy-three, it looks like that's a little bit up and down. I'm just wondering what those, like, what accounts for that? Is that like software? Is that like outside people we hire? That's for the pay-per-call for the volunteers, the stipends. That goes for their on-call services. And their training. Okay.
Few things. First off, I appreciate that letter you gave us during the Capitol, just kind of outlining for us the benefits to a volunteer. And as Kathy just mentioned, we're looking at a difference between one-point-six and six million if we hadn't all paid. So that's, that's tremendous. And over the years, you've done a great job with recruitment. Are you seeing that any more difficult right now?
Uh, yeah, it's getting a little bit more difficult, and I think it's a nationwide trend. I think it's just volunteerism across the nation is declining. The fire service especially is taking a hit. There's organizations inside Connecticut that are trying to find ways to combat it. State got a safer grant themselves for recruitment retention, which benefits all the communities in Connecticut. So I think it's trying our best to respond to that.
The, and we were talking a little bit about the pay-per-call and that being up a little bit. As I recall, that's not a really big peg, to clarify. That's just sort of a small stipend that.
What do they give for a call?
It's eight-fifty. It's based on certification.
Eight dollars.
Eight-fifty, then eight-seventy-five, nine dollars, based on what their certification level is.
Good, that's all I got. Thank you.
Other questions?
Is there anything that you requested that, in your budget, that we're not seeing? Or that didn't come to us?
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot they requested, but I would say, well, there was really not really substantial, so there wasn't like an item or anything like that. Like I said, we aligned a lot of the different accounts and things like that. If you look overall, what did they request? Fire department?
Six-twenty, one-sixty-nine, six-hundred-and-twenty?
They lost about twenty thousand dollars, yeah. So I wouldn't say anything to, there wasn't like one item or anything like that. Oh, yeah, right. The other thing, yeah, why don't you mention that?
So one of the big expenditure was thermal imaging cameras, camera replacements. We're able to secure funding through the Farmington Community Chest. So they've initially gave us money to replace two, and there's future monies there to replace four more, which will give the department six, and we were looking to get three. We were able to expand that to six. So through that was able to help us with the budget.
What was the cost of that?
For all of them, they're about twenty thousand for six, and they gave us a little over nineteen, while they're gonna end up, when it's all said and done, a little over nineteen thousand. So they paid for ninety percent of it, yeah.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I just, before we go, wanna echo CJ's comment about the letter. I thought it was a great letter, and it really does show us what's going on and what people, you know, what the volunteers are doing out there. And we can't say enough for our volunteers and our departments, for the fire department, how much we appreciate them and the community does. So, and it's something that not all communities are fortunate enough to have, so.
And I think just one thing, I know we've talked a lot, I've mentioned quite a bit about our volunteers, but we do have nine paid firefighters, and they're excellent too. And we just said, it's an overall great department and that they, I don't want them to feel like we don't care about them, because we do. They're doing, they're doing an excellent job for us, and it's a, it's a good match. We have an interesting system here, how it works, but it works for us. And a lot of other community, a few other towns have modeled it off of how we have a director and volunteers and paid people and vol, it's like, it's, it's different, but it does work, and everyone has been working pretty well together. So that's very positive.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I tentatively approve page twenty-seven through thirty.
Second?
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. I think next, we're gonna talk to Rose Panti, economic development. And that is page, page fourteen. Hi, Rose. Everyone knows Rose Panti, our economic development director. Well, we usually, and I said page fourteen, fifteen, fifty.
Fifteen, oh.
We always think that this is a good opportunity for Rose to kinda give what's going on in Farmington and some of the highlights in economic development, and the council usually enjoys that. So I've asked Rose to do that again, and so take it away.
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you all for the opportunity. I love to come and brag about Farmington, and it's easy to do. This last year was a very good year. You might remember, except for the awful picture that we did that from Page News in the Hartford Business Journal. And it's amazing how much traction we did receive for that, because as the cover said, we have a growth spurt. And we're one of the few towns, not only in the Hartford region, but really throughout the state, that continues to be very attractive to do investment. And why does that happen? I think the reason it happens for, for many different reasons. We have a wonderful location, very near to the eighty-four and nine, and we have a wonderful mill rate. We have a great town that's safe with a good education system. But also on top of that, we, we deliver services that are exceptional. And not only are our residents very happy, but the business community is very happy as well. And that kind of goodwill really gets spread around. We are known to be quite business-friendly, and our financial strength, being one of the lowest mill rates out of the thirty-eight towns, there's only two towns ahead of us, and just by a smidgen of a little bit. Our grand list continues to grow. We have a very low unemployment rate, only three-point-one percent. Our, we continue to have our triple-A bond rating. Last year, we had commercial investment of fifteen million, five-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. So that just goes to show that we continue to be growing. And because of that, I think we really need to look, and how do we continue that growth, but still do it preserving the character of this community, which is so very important. And towards those initiatives, we really start to look, where are the areas of growth? If you look over at the, what I like to call the Yukon Medical Center, we have one of the largest medical office campuses in the state. Right now, representing over thirty different medical practices, representing almost every major hospital, Children's, Trinity, Hartford Healthcare Hospital for Special Surgery. There are four-hundred-thousand square feet of medical office space, which is one-hundred percent leased. When you start looking at those numbers, you start to realize that that's an area of growth. Because that's an area of growth, we really tried to look at different planning initiatives that would allow us to continue to have growth, but in a responsible manner. So we were able to introduce some floating zones, and already that is bearing fruit. There is a thirty-thousand-square-foot. There is a thirty thousand square foot surgical day center that is under construction right now, as well as on the corner, as you come off of eighty-four, you can see it, it's going to be a beautiful second building for Connecticut Children's Hospital. I had an opportunity to look at some slides about it. They're going to have a state-of-the-art infusion room for children who have chronic ailments. It almost looks like a beautiful, like, something out of a Disney set, where it's gonna be very interactive for children who have to have chronic conditions, and they continue to go to the hospital time and time again. It's not only a perfect setting, but they'll have interactive video games, so that they start feeling that going to the hospital is a special treat, and that's something that is for a chronic condition. The reason I share all that with you is because this is really cutting-edge medicine, not only in that building, but also in the TIP building, which is where our technology incubator program is, and that's out of one of the Yukon buildings. It is completely full. There are over a hundred employees in that building right now, with over thirty-five new companies, that are really in the starting stages, so our goal is, when they graduate from that incubator program, we want to make sure they stay in Farmington. They just received a pretty big award last year, it's a technology award for really being impactful in their, the communities to which they exist, and we are starting to see more and more interest in that type of demand. Metro Realty has been a private developer, it's one of our five largest taxpayers, they told me they have their phones ringing off the hook with people wanting to come to Farmington, and they don't have any more space to give them.
Wow.
Because they are a hundred percent leased. So that's the type of economic leadership that we have here among all the different towns in the Hartford region. In, in other initiatives, I like to call it the connect, cultivate, and collaborate, and how do we collaborate with our residents? How do we connect with them? How do they know what's happening? And to that effect, I know many of you know about Explore Farmington. So in the first year, we had over nine thousand unique users to the site, thirty-six thousand page views, three hundred and seventy-eight accounts were created, a hundred and four businesses submitted their place and signed on to be part of it. We have seven premium businesses, and we average over eighty-five people a day on the site. So that allows me to communicate with those people every week, for people who have signed up to receive event emails, and so that helps the businesses, but it also helps us be able to engage the people in our community. So when you look at my budget, which is why we're here, I really make sure that all the budget is tied specifically to my goals, so whether it's the different ways that I represent the town of Farmington, and state, regional, and local, different events, but it's also continuing that engagement. So we were one of the first users of Explore Farmington, and it, the, the site is under, undergoing a little bit of an upgrade right now, and so I have put money to continue that site in the budget, because I think it's an important site that we continue to develop and encourage more people to use. And then the other increase in my budget happens to do with the flowers. Again, we want to create a sense of place. When you arrive at some of our gateways, you want to feel a sense of arrival. Someone said last night at my EDC meeting, really those flowers have almost become a little bit of our brand. People expect those flowers to be there. Those flowers are, we raise about fifty percent of the cost, but we can't rely on that every single year, and sometimes it's very difficult to get the necessary donations we need, but we feel it's an important piece. As you drive into Farmington, you see those holiday kissing balls, you see the summer flowers. So that's another area of the budget that is increased, just to make sure that we're tracking that correctly. Oh, I'm sorry. And then we also have, so some of the other things we're doing is really having a way to communicate, and so these are brand-new, very colorful, very up-to-date, bright promotional materials, we'll still, we want to make sure they're perfect before we hand them out to everyone, but I did want to let you know that we have them, we worked hard on them, everyone contributed. In the back, you'll see that the photo credits were done by people in the community, Augusto Russell, who knew him, he was such a great photographer, but it, it's really became a great fun project to do, and I think it really starts to show who Farmington is and how we want to reflect ourselves in the community.
And what's the, the difference?
Oh, yes. So then our tagline is live, work, play, which a lot of towns use, but we finish it off with prosper, because when you start to think about it, our businesses prosper, our residents are prospering, the community as a whole is thriving. That's what we want to communicate, because that's really who we are.
And Rosa, because I don't think some, the council may not be aware, but I think this is a marketing and a communication tool, but explain how each, each one of the different, the prosper has a different thing.
Yes, so on, on each of the pages, so under, for example, the live page, it's really filled with demographics and information, so if somebody is thinking of buying a house in Farmington, or perhaps Jackson Labs, many times will request, we have, we're trying to attract different employees, can you give us some information on what it's like to live or work in Farmington? So on the live page, we talk about our community, we talk about fun facts, we talk about the different housing criteria, and we talk about education. On the work portion, that's really geared towards those businesses thinking, do I want to expand in Farmington? Do I want to come to Farmington? And again, filled with demographics, who are, who are our big employers, how is economic development done, what kind of programs might they be available, and what is some of our economic stability if you are a business coming to Farmington? Under play, this is an easy one to do, because we have lots and lots of great amenities and options, so it pretty much lists some of the highlights and draws people to Explore Farmington, to get more things in detail. And then finally, the prosper page. And the prosper page is kind of our bragging page, and it talks about our different awards that we've won, our business culture, our top-rated public education, our low taxes, and then I think it has a very unique thing, we've taken all the area towns, and we've put down their mill rate as of this year, and let people see in hard numbers what your annual tax bill is in all the surrounding towns, and what your savings are, the last column right here in Farmington. So in all those different pages, I think the information, we try to deliver it in a concise manner, because we all read and skim things so quickly, but there's an awful lot of information, I think, in the type of content that people are looking for.
And then this you have, you're gonna, it's not a hundred percent complete yet, but you have these, but all of this is online, too?
Yes, and there is a flipbook online, we kind of tested it, and people are starting to look at it, and they seem to like it. So everything will be online, available online.
Right, but you do want some hard copies, just so you can hand them out to businesses and different things?
Absolutely.
And then this can be updated, too, correct?
Right, we can update it ourselves in-house, because all the design is done, we have everything, and then all we have to do is, you know, when things change, whether it's the mill rate or anything else, we can change those numbers ourselves.
And this was one of the initiatives of the economic development about better communication and marketing to our.
Absolutely.
To both residents and businesses.
Yes.
Sounds wonderful. Great, thank you. Questions for Rose? Yes, go.
Thank you, Rosa.
Oh, you're welcome.
That was great. I remember going to the eighties, I have two questions, both related actually to the breakfast. I remember going to the quarterly breakfast where someone from Civic Lift presented the first time on Explore Farmington. I vaguely remember him saying something to the effect of, if you have enough businesses, those businesses have to pay for their accounts?
No.
Or ads? Because I remember him saying something about how he'd bring something in that would potentially pay for Explore Farmington. And I remember being skeptical, but.
Yes. Well, one of the aspects of Explore Farmington is that it does have a revenue arm, the possibility of a revenue arm. We didn't want it to be filled with ads, so this revenue arm, all businesses are able to have a free listing, but if they choose to have a premier listing at a very economical price, it's only a hundred and fifty dollars a year, those premier listings would then be shared with us, and we would not have to, we would incur as much revenue, so that this would not be an annual expense. And what happened was this, so we were one of the first towns to initiate this, which I think is good, but really, the website was not to the place that I felt comfortable really pushing to sell these premiums. So I spoke to the developer, Evan Dobis, and he understood what we said, so we reached, he wrote, we negotiated a memorandum of understanding that we paid for the development of the site, but then we received the site for free for one year, because I just didn't feel that the site, I mean, we made it work internally, because we worked very hard on it, but I didn't feel that it was ready to start selling as a premier listing. So he gave us a year for free, and then right now, he's upgrading, and if by July first, the upgrades are to where he has promised are going to be, and we already have a test site that looks really nice, then I feel we'll be really ready to sell those premium listings, with the hope that we are going to generate enough, so that I don't have to ask for it next year.
And regarding the breakfast?
Yes.
Did Peoples Bank take over the sponsorship?
Yeah, so it was, it's a very curious phenomenon in Farmington. We are receiving a lot of interest in new banks coming to Farmington. So Peoples Bank is here, Ion Bank is here, Thomiston Savings Bank is opening, Chase Manhattan Bank is putting in a proposal to TPZ next week, they're coming, and Collinsville Bank has already also announced that they're coming, and I just heard a rumor this afternoon, I don't know if it's true, that a sixth bank is coming. You might ask yourself why, I know I did, and seventy percent of the deposits in town were held by Farmington Bank. And whenever one major player changes, the other banks see it as an opportunity for them to perhaps come into the market, and also kind of get a piece of the action type thing. So when Farmington Bank was leaving, we met, Kathy and I met with John Patrick and Almaga Schwanhopper, and at that time, they said, although we're being acquired and we're not going to be here, we would like to keep this relationship for an additional year. And so the Economic Development Commission felt that since Farmington Bank had initiated this breakfast series seven years ago, it was only right to allow them to continue it for one more year. The commission, seeing how much interest there is in different banks wanting to sponsor it, they are, we are in discussions right now on how we're going to deal with this at the end of the year. Should we open it up to the other banks? Do we stay with Peoples Bank? Do we entice them to perhaps one bank sponsors the breakfast, one bank sponsors all the flowers, and one bank sponsors Explore Farmington? That has been discussed. So that's, that's where we are, we're in a fortunate position that people want to sponsor it, so more to come.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yep, just first a comment and then a question. So I remember last year when you gave your presentation, you made an analogy that you're like a plate spinner, and so I think you've done a fantastic job at keeping all those plates spinning, Rose. And my question is, on page fourteen, the line item current expense, so the department request was lower than what the manager assigned, now is that due to just membership fees were large, there was new information available that the membership fees were higher than, than they were at the time that Rose did the budget?
No, what we did is, we actually combined the top, the line right above it with that line. You see the miscellaneous supplies?
Oh, yes.
We just combined those two lines together. When we analyzed her spending over the past several years, we realized nothing was being spent on miscellaneous supplies, but consistently, the current expense was over budget, was being over expended, so we combined the two lines together.
Okay.
That more accurately reflect what was going on.
Thanks.
CJ.
Yeah, I appreciate everything you've done. I think, I like the folders there, I'm looking forward to seeing them when they hit the road. So is there any truth to the rumor that there's an effort afoot to rename us Bankington?
Well, we are Charmington, I think. No, hopefully not, we will not be Bankington.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Rose.
You're welcome, thank you for your time.
I tentatively approve pages fourteen and fifteen.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you.
Next is Nancy Perrin.
I actually walked over without a coat, I loved it.
Wait till tomorrow, it's even warmer tomorrow, yes. Gonna be teased into spring.
Is it supposed to rain?
Fifty-five to sixty-five is the first word in the TIP.
On page fifty-five to sixty-five? So in Nancy's account, there's a couple of, there's not any new items, but I thought there was a couple of things just to mention. One of the things that we are doing is, is that we are going out for a new contract for our dial-ride services, and we do anticipate that it's gonna probably be more money, and so we have funded that with a little bit more money. What page is that one on? As you can see on, it's the professional services, so we do have that. We also put a little bit more money in Nancy's accounts to, in some of the housing, you know, Nancy, we do have affordable housing in some of our buildings, and it's not a lot of money, but we have increased that just because of some of the maintenance and some of the age of the buildings, so we have put a little bit more money in those accounts. And other than that, it's really no difference in, we count basically a maintenance budget. The one thing I will mention, there was one thing that was cut out of the budget that I probably would have included in the budget if the target was a little higher, and that was one community and rec brochure, and that was a brochure that Nancy would like to do to expand some communication, some different things, and that brochure was about sixty-five hundred dollars, sixty-four, six, six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, so that was cut out. So I don't know if anyone has any specific questions on Nancy's budget?
And what page would that be?
Page fifty-five. Under fifty-five, under marketing. You can see that the department requested, Nancy, it's down on fifty-five, the second item, marketing, the department requested nineteen thousand, and I cut it back to thirteen thousand, too.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
On several pages, I note that there were requests for part-time staff and other staffing. Fifty-five, sixty-one, and sixty-two jumped out at me.
Yeah, Nancy did request a few part-time people, and at this point, with under that budget target, we did not include any new people in the budget.
What were, what would have been the roles of?
The first one on page fifty-five was to just further develop some of the communication, like the program that we had last night on talking about the legalization of marijuana, and some of the information we're putting out on all the different topics that people are interested in. We've developed a community bulletin board, which you'll all see in May, but to just kind of keep that momentum rolling. And then the other one you're talking about is, I believe, I don't remember asking for another part-time time other than under transportation for the dial, the dial ride. I had spread it out under the part-time and that sort of thing, and it's all back in the professional services. But I don't think there was another part-time.
See ya.
On page sixty-two, there's, at least the salary was changed, the request was for eighty-eight thousand, and I reckon, I think that was requested for last year, too.
Oh, that's the full-time, that's per the rec policy. One of the goals is to get the supervisor for rec services salary in there. It's a rec fund policy. We've been doing it slowly over, over time.
One of the things is that, as we remember, we have the recreation fund, and then you have the recreation and the operating budget, and we are, we're trying to support that this position, the full-time position, would all be in the, in this budget. So take it out of the recreation, right now it's half, we, and we've been slowly trying to do that, so Nancy had put in the whole amount, taking it out of the rec budget, putting it into this budget, and we put it back into the rec budget.
So it's the same dollars, but split?
But it's in different accounts, yeah.
Right, it's the goal eventually to get into this.
Okay.
Okay.
Other questions? Bruce?
Yes, some of them were already answered. In terms of, and I think I wrote down a note, Westwood's properties and the operating, is it in this?
Westwood's golf course?
Golf course, yes.
We're gonna get to that next.
Yes, it's a different fund.
Okay. I'll hold the question.
Other questions on this page? Go ahead.
Just a comment. You've always done a tremendous job, I appreciate it, with the, with the recs, with the community services. How's our housing going right now?
It's going well. You know, we've, we're completely filled with our Section Eight program. We have our town-owned rentals, which, as Kathy mentioned, they are the older buildings, so, you know, they do require some updating. You know, Maple Village has been going well, although we've had a little stream of vacancies, but it seems to be going well. Co-op, where we have a few pieces of property on the market right now, so, you know, they're moving along.
One of the things, Nancy, it's been your initiative with your department, is maybe you can talk about it, it's one of your goals, I think, too, is that, is that doing more with the recreation of community types of events?
Right.
And maybe mention just a couple of them, if it's a good opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. Just trying to really network and get out into the community and provide community events for people of all ages to be able to come. So we've kind of given a real good facelift to our concert series down by the gazebo. Actually, this year we're actually partnering with New Horizons because of the construction. They won't be able to do their strawberry festival on their grounds. So our first concert is gonna be a cooperative effort with New Horizons. Have a nice new relationship now with that grant. We've done different fall programs, our egg hunt is another partnership on the Polo Grounds. So we're trying for our large community events that really just encourage all ages in the public to really network with other entities to provide them.
Go ahead, Bruce.
I got my other question. So the Dial-A-Ride, I guess we're, we're doing some talks, is, is there potential to expand the territory of what Dial-A-Ride does today?
I would love to. Currently with the two vehicles that we have, I, we just really wouldn't be able to do that. We're, we're actually started a big fundraising campaign with First Church up in Farmington to be able to get a third vehicle. Right now with the two, we give priority to medical appointments. If we were to go further, it would just lessen the amount of people that could use the service. If we got an additional vehicle, I'd love to add Hartford a few days a week, and then I'd love to add the veterans in Newington, because we don't go there either, and those are two locations that I think are critical. They would just take us out of sight too long.
Right, right.
With the two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what about the same stay on Dial-A-Ride, any other funding, grant funding?
For, well, for all our programs, we're always looking for grant funding. With the Dial-A-Ride, I've been able to secure for the last two years to purchase new vehicles, but they're still replacing old ones. The one we just put on the road is replacing an old one. We're doing the fundraising campaign. We received grant money from the Community Chest.
That's what I was gonna do.
To do our Parkinson's program, that has been so successful, we were taking a waiting list. Actually, Community Chest is meeting next week to further vote on the remainder of that budget. They'd like to fund it a little bit longer. And Community Chest also stepped up to the plate to fund our COPS and Kids program that used to be funded through OPM, the Office of Policy and Management, but when the person who was running that program retired, they just kind of washed the program away, and it was so successful, so Community Chest has stepped up and is supplying the funds to be able to continue that program, which is starting within the next month or two.
For the Dial-A-Ride vans, Nancy, one van comes from, most of it comes from the state grant, right?
Actually, both, both our vans at this point have been state-funded.
And then when you replace it, and then you've been fund, but then, didn't they fundraise for one of the vans?
We are, it's, the fundraising is actually this June.
For the third van?
For the third van, yeah.
Right, because the other one was fundraised for.
Right. Unfortunately, we got this one that we just got this year, and it's replacing one that has to be retired. We, we actually got approved for a grant next year, but the van that's, the second van that's on the road has about a hundred and sixty thousand miles, which are hard miles in a, you know, Lyft van, so it will be replacing. So that's why we, we started the fundraising campaign for the third.
Great, great. And I just have to add, too, about the Community Chest. We've heard them mentioned a couple times, and I know they are wonderful. The Community Chest is wonderful for our, for our town, and they help the food pantry, which I'm involved in, and they're always out there to, to help out with equipment and things, so they're a great organization.
They are, I agree.
Anything else for? Yes, Beth?
As a follow-up, for Dial-A-Ride, do you have projections for that fundraiser? You know, and how likely do you think it'll be a hundred percent funded out of private collections?
You know, in the beginning, it looked like it was gonna be a slow fundraiser, but we're, we've actually gotten a few very large benefactors. Like I said, First Church, their outreach committee is working on it, and I do know that the person who's leading it has been talking to two people who are really offering to give quite a substantial amount. I, I don't know at what level they've agreed on, so I, you know, I'll wait till he announces it, but.
What's your goal?
Our goal would be fifty.
Okay. That's great.
Yeah. I think we might hit it, though. I really do.
Good.
Other questions? Yes.
On page sixty-two, you might have covered it, I'm not sure. Under full-time, it was requested for eighty-eight to forty-five. Is that anything to do with the target, or what was that?
No, that was, what Patty asked is that, part of our policy is that we really wanna get in the rec fund, the salary in, and so Nancy put this full salary in at eighty-eight, and we put it back to forty-five, and put the rest of it back into the rec fund.
Okay, all right, I got you. Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, Bruce?
No, oh, sorry. I tentatively approve pages fifty-five through sixty-five.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
Rec fund or Westwood's?
Oh, yeah.
We always forget that one. Although, I don't think there's any change at all.
This is the house in the complex, the Staples House.
The red, the red.
The red, the red silver box. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that?
Any questions?
Stephanie?
Nope. Is that page standalone?
That's a standalone page.
Okay, tentatively approve page twenty-two.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Rec? Yeah. So if you go, the red tabs in the back.
The rec fund? Seventy-two to seventy-nine.
Seventy-two to seventy-nine. This is the rec fund, which is not part of the operating, and it, this is, it has revenues and expenditures. If you look at this page that doesn't have a page number on it, right after the tab, you can see that the incoming revenues are projected at five hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars, and the appropriations are to match that. Each one of these accounts, we have the sports and physical fitness, the cultural and creative, the bus trips, the recreation camps, the senior trips, and other revenue and interest. And so these programs support revenue, bring in revenue, and then you have the appropriations that match on the other side. In most of the, a lot of these accounts, they run them, so they run that, how much the expenditures are is obviously how much the revenues are. That said, there are different accounts that supplement the, a lot of the recreation budget. So the soccer program brings in a lot of revenue, that revenue supplements other programs, so not everything like when Nancy.
Well, what would be an example of that? A cultural or a creative?
Like a dance, dance program, something like that, a cultural program for, for younger kids.
Right. And we've, we've, one of the things that we were happy about, that over the last years we've, the pendulum has swung, and we're back on the other side a little bit, is that, you know, that at one time they were saying all recreation had to break even, and in reality, recreation, a lot of it doesn't break even if you really think of, not that rails to trails, but, you know, a movie night is recreation, and do you really wanna start charging for movie nights? Or, you know, a cultural creative doesn't maybe break even, but, you know, it, it's, recreation doesn't have to be totally as a business. And so we run most of the programs like it's a business, but it's not one hundred percent like that, and that's why we have it also in the operating budget, too.
Questions? Yes.
Yes, on the very first page, that's not numbered there.
Yes.
So department request and manager request under revenues for sports and physical fitness, what's, what's the, there's like a forty-four thousand dollar difference between your projections for that revenue?
Joe, can you remind me on that?
Basically, again, if you remember, we were talking about the salary for the rec coordinator, rec supervisor, part of it was in one budget, part of it was in the other budget.
Okay.
So this is just the offset to that.
Got it.
Actually, if you look on the page seventy-eight, you can see that they requested, under the full-time line, they requested fifty thousand, and then we bumped it up to ninety-five thousand, where we put the, that's basically the offset.
Got it.
That's the offset on the revenue side.
Thanks, Joe.
Other questions?
I tentatively approve page seventy-two. Bruce, seventy-nine.
Second?
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Westwood's Golf Course, which is next. This is the Westwood's Golf Course, other than the maintenance of it. The maintenance of it is in the operating budget under Russ and Scott's. As you can see here on the same page, it has a revenue and expenditure portion. As you can see, that we're projecting revenues at five hundred and seventy-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, and we're having appropriations at five hundred and seventy-four dollars eight hundred and seventy-five. And you can see that the revenues are our green fees, our season tickets, our golf cart rentals, our driving range, our lease payments, and interest, and then the appropriations, again, on the other side of the equation.
Yeah, I'm.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Regarding Westwood's, and I don't know if you have this data, and I'm, and I'm curious if you would be able to get it. Do we know, I know that they charge different fees for residents versus out-of-towners. Do we know what the percent of?
You know what you're gonna ask of users?
Yeah, and what does that look like? Do you have that data? And if not, will you be able to get that to us?
I can get that very easily. I know we did a study probably about four years ago. I just don't know if it's changed since then, and I think it was, what, fifty-five percent out of town and forty-five in, but I don't know if that's changed over the last couple of years. I could run a report in a few moments and get back to Kathy about that.
That would be great. And, and would this report potentially have what those revenues look like, or no?
Yes, in two forms, because we would do two different types of reports. One, to see who our season ticket holders are, if they're out of town or in town, and then, as well as, the easier part is the revenues between out-of-town players and in-town. So it's, it's two different statistics, but both of them, you can break out easily.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Beth?
It looks to me as if maybe you're anticipating, or historically we're seeing the greens fees and the driving range fees that's decreasing a bit? Would you say that's?
It's been up and down based on the season, the weather. The requests that we've made are benchmarks. About a year or two ago, we did a whole study about what would it be our benchmarks, our median, so that's how we've done our budget from that.
Right. What we do.
We've met them pretty good the last couple of years.
And again, golf, golfing is difficult. It's like snow, is that if you have a lot of rain, you have rain on the weekend, you have that. So we really try, one of the things we did, that Nancy said a few years ago, is that we really analyzed and tried to, with the averages of what we've used, and we try to use those five-year averages, and then we look to see what they are. And I don't think things have really, if you look, actually, if you go back probably ten years and stuff, things really have not changed that much. It's really just fluctuates, I think, based on weather and some different things like that. It's really not that much of a difference.
Need a longer look back than what's right here.
Right, yeah.
The good news is, is we have continued support from the leagues and the season pass holders. So the same folks are continuing to come back each year, which is good. So that's kind of your bread and butter, that it stays.
And is, on the same page where it's appropriations, the clubhouse, there's just a little fluctuation, the revised budget from eighteen nineteen to the department request and then manager budget. Is that just, you just try to ballpark it to Nancy? That's probably looking over the last few years kind of thing?
Yeah, and again, that's what we do, it's Nancy puts what she thinks, and Joe and I try to look at it and go back more in the history and just try to tweak it a little bit.
Count the weeks in summer, I mean, there a lot goes into kind of figuring that out, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Questions? Okay. That's eighty to eighty-three, right?
Okay, tentatively approve page eighty through eighty-three.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
I think that's it for Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
All right, next we have the library. And the library is on page. They're part of our non-for-profit groups.
Seventeen.
On page seventeen. If you, if you see on page seventeen, they're part of our non-for-profit groups, and the library grant, it's their own line item, and it's at two million six hundred and three thousand twenty-three dollars. We give them a lump sum for the library grant, and just, just for background, historically, what I do with the library grant is the director, now Laura Horn, before Jay Johnson, would meet with me, they'd go over the budget, and basically whatever target the town council has given me, that's the same percentage I will increase the library's budget. So if, if this is a two-point-five percent increase over last year, which is what my, which you gave me, and unless there is something that the library really needs, wants, or we have a large discussion about, they try to adhere to the target that the town is under, too. So that's how it usually works. So with that, I think Laura Horn is here, and I'll have her introduce her group and come on up, and we, they usually, we excuse ourselves and go from there.
Let's just see if I can get the. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Hey, good.
And the library board chair wanted to be able to come here this evening just to say a few words, but she was called away for personal matters. So Alan Sherman, our previous library board chair, is gonna come up and just say a few words.
A familiar face.
Very few words. If, if Lori was here tonight, I know one of the things that she would wanna talk about would be her experience, not terribly long ago, about going to the library, seeing the parking lot completely full, going in, seeing the conference rooms full, children's programs going on, community room in, in operation, and in general, having practically all of the spaces in the library at full use. These are things that haven't changed in a while. We're very proud of that, and I think the town is, is very proud and pleased to have an organization like the library in Farmington. One of the things that has changed, of course, is the leadership, and we've had, we've had twelve years, I believe, with, with Jay, and, and for about eight of them, Laura has been working at the library, working with Jay, gradually learning, developing, creating her own thoughts for what might happen if she were given the opportunity to lead the library. And when we had the, when we had the search. And when we had the, when we had the search this fall for a new director, Laura certainly emerged as our top candidate. She comes with her own set of ideas, she comes with the experience that she has garnered under Jay's leadership, this will be her operation, and I'm very interested, not interested, I'm excited, the whole board is excited, about helping her achieve her vision. So with that, I will reintroduce Laura Horn, thank you.
And on behalf of the council, welcome. We've had a number of years with Jay coming before us, and we're delighted to have you here, here tonight.
We'll miss the bow tie.
Yes.
Yes, I will have you wearing bow tie. I also often don't wear socks, though, so maybe that will be...
That's good.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have the videos over here. I put it here yesterday. I'll use the one that's on here. I know how fond everyone's grown of Jay's videos over the year, and I did not want to disappoint, so there will be a video. So, Council Chair Nickerson, council members, thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight before you as the library's new executive director, to share with you some highlights over the past year, as well as some of our plans for the year ahead. So 2018 was a very successful year at the library, we had over 1,200 programs and 26,000 attendees, which is an 18% increase from the year before. Over 5,700 people attended our Tots and Toons program alone, which is very popular on Friday mornings, if you have ever been to the library on a Friday morning, there are lots of little toddlers running around with their parents and caregivers. Library staff also, in addition to library group programs, dedicated 225 hours to training patrons on one-on-one on computer hardware and software, and in the maker space on equipment. And those maker space trainees came back to the library on their own to use the equipment over 250 times over the course of the year. So the maker space has been very popular over the past few years. Information services staff processed 542 passports, as well as 102 notary transactions, and more than 314,000 items were checked out over the course of the year. There is also a 9% increase in teen book circulation, and for those of you who may not know, lending is typically down in libraries across the United States, it's nothing unique to Connecticut or New England, and to see that 9% increase was really encouraging. So far this year, we've seen a 20% increase in ebook circulation every month, which is up from even last year, once the ebook circulation increased 13% over the course of the year. Traditional print circulation is also increasing this year, there's been an increase every month, except for one, when it was about the same as it was last year, I think it was like, down maybe 300. Summer reading was a huge success last year, the library issued 540 new library cards and greeted 45,000 people between the two libraries. Teen summer reading registration was the highest that it's ever been, and teens read 200,000 more pages than they had the year before, and earned a total of 5,626 prizes. Now, so they didn't get to take home 5,000 things over the course of the year, or the summer, some of those were prizes that they were able to collect from the teen store, and other prizes were tickets to the prize baskets that we gave out over the summer The adult summer reading program was also a huge success, we gave out 574 bookmarks and received over 100 entries for the prize baskets, we recorded by 105 patron-authored book reviews. And while these numbers are important, and they give the library and the town so much to be proud of, they aren't the whole story, they don't show the impact that all of these experiences and resources had on individuals' lives, and this video does a much better job of that.
Go on to the days of the book jails with the shushing librarians, this is an interactive, interesting, very vibrant place. This library is like a big open arms, you can come in and find anything.
I encourage anybody who's not taking advantage of the Farmington Library, that they're missing out on a tremendous resource.
So I'm founding a medical education company, so when I came here initially, I was having disbelief, and I walked into this studio and really saw an opportunity to bring my vision to life. You really do have a lot of resources here at your disposal, as well as people who are willing to help you. Very, very grateful to the Farmington Library for giving me my start.
We're from Texas, and we've never seen a library like this before, so we just moved up here last year, and these libraries are amazing.
There's always adventures to be had.
I have a nonfiction picture book coming out in October, and the research for that book was primarily done here at the library.
The books?
The books!
All the things that I learned to do in the maker space, that bring out talents that I didn't know I had.
Every section of this library has something for somebody.
It's really an excellent library, it's one of my favorite libraries in Connecticut.
It's a great library, and the energy is fantastic.
I don't know what I would do without them.
This place, it is really my favorite place.
So as you can see from this video, the Farmington libraries have so much to offer the community, and people often talk about the demise of the public library, which in their eyes is just a repository for dusty old books, but we know that public libraries are so much more than that, they are places of opportunity where people can learn a new skill, meet and engage with members of their community, be exposed to new ideas, and work towards their dreams. And while we can't predict the future, we can say that whatever it may hold, the libraries will be there helping the community thrive, always innovating and providing the best possible services, experiences, and resources that we can, not resting on our laurels, but putting in the extra effort to ensure that our relationship with the community remains strong. Community partnerships make the library stronger by keeping us, excuse me, in tune with community trends and needs, and enabling us to offer a wide variety of programs and experiences. This past year, we partnered with the Farmington Historical Society and the New Britain Museum of American Art to host a Farmington art exhibit at the Barney Library, which was a great success and a really wonderful exhibit. We worked with Forward CT to bring community issue series to the library, which provided a safe space for community discussions on topics such as prison reform, immigration, the Me Too movement, and climate change. The teen librarian partnered with other local area teen librarians to host the Rick Rorden Trivia Tournament, which was a huge success at the library. There were 80 teens and tweens who participated in the tournament, but our door count that day was over 1,000, which is double what it typically is on a Saturday, so in addition to all of the people who are actually participating, their friends and family members came to engage in the other activities that were going on, it was a really wonderful community event. As we look to the year ahead, we will be recommitting to our mission of partnering with the community. We've already created a new webpage on the library's website that highlights community partner events, but linking to their flyers and to their websites, and we're also designating an area of the bulletin board in the lobby of the main library to community partner events that will be staff monitored, so that it doesn't get cluttered with all of the other stuff that gets put on bulletin boards. We're also developing feedback tools for targeted programs to make sure that we can get feedback from patrons who come to the events and to help us improve as we go along throughout the year. And as we look to update our long-range plan, we will be hosting community conversations to ensure that our new strategic framework is based on community values and needs. With a tagline of service beyond expectations, we have no choice but to be able to deliver service beyond expectations, so we're always evaluating library policies and procedures to identify and eliminate barriers to access, as well as to ensure ease of use and efficacy. So, right now, we're working with the company Library Market on a new event calendar and room booking system. This allows patrons to easily, not only register for programs, but to save their event registrations to their own calendars. It also allows individuals and organizations to pay, to pay for room bookings when they need to through PayPal, which just streamlines the process, they don't have to make an extra trip to the library to pay with a check or a credit card in person. The system also has a really modern look, and it's very user-friendly. We're preparing staff to meet evolving community needs by cultivating a leadership team that is supportive and encouraging, so that even as staff roles evolve, they will embrace every opportunity for learning and innovation and face the future fearlessly. We are recognizing and celebrating unique talents, giving staff opportunities to do things that they wouldn't normally do. So we have a lending services staff member who went to FIT and is also a master knitter, so if you've ever seen a knitting magazine everywhere, they have patterns in them, she makes the patterns for these magazines. She's teaching a knitting class at the library, and she's also doing adult craft-noons over at the Barney Library. We're cross-training staff, so that if people call out, no matter what is happening at the library, we have someone who's able to help out in any department. And lastly, we're encouraging staff to remain grounded in their strengths and interests, knowing that an engaged and passionate team will not only face challenges as they come head-on, but that they will embrace them and grow from them. This winter, staff were asked to reflect on the unique skills they bring to the library's team and to create a tagline and clarifying statement that would be added to a poster. So this was something like, "I open minds," and then the clarifying statement would be, "I host programs that introduce new perspectives and ideas." The result of this project is currently on display for the month of March in the Jay Johnson Community Room at the library, it's also up on our Instagram, and I believe on Facebook as well, so if you follow the library, you'll see the, you'll see the images. So part of maintaining a vibrant and diverse collection is tracking the statistics, keeping informed of national and local trends and topics, and researching new resources. Last year, we added Hoopla, a digital library of ebooks, e-audiobooks, music, and videos that are all simultaneously accessible, so for anybody who's ever used Overdrive to download books, it's wonderful, we select the materials that are in there, we can purchase them, but most of them are single-user. With Hoopla, we don't purchase, we don't get to select what materials are in there, but they're all multi-access, so if you're ever waiting for something on Overdrive, if you hop on over to Hoopla, you can probably find something that you like, and it's available right away. We're constantly evaluating new online resources and adding new and exciting opportunities for remote user-directed learning. Creative Bug is the latest such resource and provides access to over 1,000 online craft training sessions, and is a really great extension of our maker space. Part of making sure that we have quality collection is also taking care of the resources that we already have at the library. The Farmington Room is home to a wonderful research collection, as well as invaluable pieces of Farmington history, which are located in the archives. We are currently inventorying and cataloging the entire archival collection to ensure discoverability as well as safety of the collection. This process also entails ensuring that all items are properly stored in archival quality enclosures and digitizing appropriate materials. Items that have already been digitized include the library's primary collection of photographs, relevant pideia materials, and oral histories. Much of this digitization took place on equipment that the library has in the maker space, and is available on Biblioboard through the library's website, and we're currently working with the Connecticut Digital Archive to get our materials uploaded there as well. It's Me Too technology. So technology is not only changing itself at a rapid pace, but it's changing the way society works as well. We are constantly identifying and evaluating new and emerging technologies and adapting them for staff and patron applications to support education and the local economy through workforce applications, as well as entertainment and equal access to these technologies. This past year, we added three early literacy computer stations to the children's department at the main library, and they are specifically for ages 2 through 8, and offer fun, interactive content across all curricular areas. We plan to add two of these stations to the Barney Library this year, as well as two of their after-school Edge, which are homework assistance computer stations, to the tween space at the main library, and those are geared towards ages 6 to 12. The nice thing about these computer stations is that they're a closed architecture and they don't have access to the internet, so they can get on, they can do the programs that are on them and the games that are on them, but they can't get out onto the internet, they can't get to Facebook, they can't get to anywhere else that you don't want kids to be able to get to, everything is educational and fun on these. We also have technology that can be checked out, we have a Views 3D 360 camera and a GoPro Hero 5 that can now be checked out at the information services desk, after you do a training with Harry, so that you know how to actually use the equipment. So soon, we will have a library 360 tour up on our YouTube page that was done with the Views 3D 360 camera, and that'll give you a better idea of what can be done with that technology. When it comes down to it, though, it's all about the experience, and part of that is providing spaces that are inviting and comfortable and flexible, where visitors of all ages can enjoy and be inspired by a vast array of experiences. As we identify areas that need updating over the course of the next months and years, we will plan incremental updates and use versatile spaces like the studio, which allows for ESL classes, virtual reality programs, and original AV content creation as inspiration for our space design. Library programs offer the community opportunities to come together in a social setting and interact with one another as they learn and are exposed to new ideas. Library programs contribute to the strength of our already vibrant community by offering unique experiences that support economic success, healthy living, civic engagement, early literacy skills development, as well as the arts and creativity. And here are just a few things to look forward to in the year ahead, so we have our book groups and children's storytimes, we have our Sixth Annual Maker Fair coming up on Sunday, March 31st, from 1 to 4, which is going to be much bigger this year, we have a whole team of library staff planning it, it'll be a wonderful event in the children's department and in the community room, but also throughout the second floor of the library. The Richard Garmony Music Series continues with monthly concerts throughout the year, we have a suicide awareness training in April that's done in partnership with Forward CT, and blood pressure clinics throughout the year in partnership with the Farmington Valley VNA. For teens, we have the Teen Tech Time Series, where they can get introduced to paper circuits and how to use the library's 3D printers, there's also a Young Writers Club for teens that brings in professionals to talk to teens about developing their writing, and there are SAT practice sessions. For children, there will always be the traditional storytimes, there's also reading to dogs, chess lessons, and club play, Lego club, and for the parents, there's potty training and nurturing touch class and a circle of security parenting. These are just a few of the things that are coming up this spring, and if you have any interest in these programs or any other programs that are coming up this year, I have brought some brochures with me. And I hope to see you all at the library this year, so thank you very much for your time.
Well, we thank you for coming and for the wonderful video, you've held up the...
I tried.
Jay's goals of being really entertaining and showing us what the library's all about, which is community, and it's clearly, it's still there and will be there, and we appreciate your... And it's clearly, it's still there and will be there, and we appreciate your video and your conversation about the library and what's to come, and we appreciate your library board, the people coming in with us tonight, being with us tonight. So, thank you. Any questions or comments from the -- yes, Bruce?
First of all, thank you again. I think this, just listening to the story and the amount of visitors that visit there, a variety of different ages, I think that's fabulous. Just a general question because you talk about the 3D printer, and I've been doing a lot of research and it's kind of expensive. So when folks use the 3D printer, is there any type of charge for that?
There is. They pay for the filament for the 3D printer. So I believe it's five cents a gram, and that's just the cost of the filament itself.
Okay. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Any other comments?
Yes.
I can't say enough about the library. So I've been here 20 years, and 17 years of those have been as a parent, and so we've gotten a lot of use out of the library, less lately, but still active for the library. So my question is, what do you feel that either this year coming, or I know that you get kind of the standard increase depending on what the target is according to the town council, but are there stressors to the budget, you know, as things change with library usage and demand? Or would you say that there are things maybe longer term that you would kind of have your sights on improving or expanding or how things might change?
No, I think that the library is very well-funded. I think that we are lucky in the relationship that we have with the town, and we've always had the money to do all of the things that we need to do and a lot of the things that we want to be able to do as well when we can. I'm still pretty new to this position, so I think at this point, you know, I don't see anything major, you know, any major changes in libraries or in public library service to their communities that would account for a large budget increase that we would ask for. We have a great space. A lot of libraries, you know, the main cost is because their spaces are no longer adequate for their needs. Our main library is more than adequate for the size of this community. It's very spacious. I think that maintaining the building will certainly be an expense over the years as, you know, as roofs need to be replaced and that sort of thing, but that's something that the libraries and the library board will be working closely with the FEGLA with to budget on, and I think that most of those capital projects are many, many years out at this point. But it's certainly something that we are looking at. Yes?
And I have to just comment, I can't help it, but I've been in town for a long time to use the library, but now I'm coming back around with my grandsons, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful place for kids again. It always has been, but they enjoy it so much, and it's one of the things they ask to do when they come to visit, is to go to the library. So I feel pretty proud about that.
I do too, absolutely.
And go to the puppet area and so.
It's a great space. I do not live in Farmington right now. I live in Glastonbury, and I have taken my son to the Glastonbury -- I have a two-and-a-half year old. I've taken him to the Glastonbury Library, but I've also taken him to this library, and he's always like, "Library? Fish? Fish? Fish tank?" He wants this library. He does not want the Glastonbury Library. If I take him there, he's like, "Fish tank." I'm like, "No, sorry, wrong one, kid." He loves, it's a wonderful space. Absolutely. We're very lucky.
I'll just add, I have a three-year-old. The fish tank is a hit with him. I swear, it must be the age. It's a hit.
Yes, love it. It's like, I don't even know how he remembers things. I feel like their brains are still so tiny, but he remembers the fish tank at this library and also the secret stairs, because I took him down the staff stairs with him. Secret stairs?
CJ.
Laura, you mentioned you're new to the position, but not new to the library, and I want to thank you. I think we're very fortunate to have you moving up to the executive director position.
Thank you.
So thank you. Few things that you mentioned that I think bear repeating. The teens, first of all, in all of the electronics, computer areas, you do a great job. And the training of people that come in and are trying to figure out what this new piece of electronics is, not usually the kids who are doing that, it's usually the parents, is fantastic. But not just the teens' use of the electronics there, but that 200,000 pages additionally read by the teens is amazing. We do look now at libraries more to be things other than just, as you said, the dusty old books, but the kids seem to come in for that, too, and I think that's a tribute to our library, your staff, all the organizations that help out the library along the way. So I just wanted to thank you with that. The GoPro 5 seemed very interesting. I think if we had that during our meetings here, fascinating, the response online. Probably not a good idea. Anyway, I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Laura, a great job with the video as well as your presentation. Thank you very much. A lot of us know the high school library is very small and inefficient, and I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about the volume of high school students that come to the Farmington Public Library and really how important that is for them.
Absolutely. So we, I mean, the teen space, you know, it changes on a day-to-day basis. It changes throughout the school year depending on what sports the kids are involved in. But typically, on an average school day, 20 to, you know, 25 or 30 teens every afternoon in the teen space, hanging out on the chairs, on the computers, playing games, doing programs in one of the boardrooms that are adjacent to the space. You will also, if you come to the library in the afternoons around 3 o'clock, find teens sort of spread out around the library, you know, working on group projects together in the study rooms. It's a really great space, and we're fortunate to have the high school so close to the library so that the teens are able to just walk right down. A lot of libraries don't have that, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I will leave some handouts, some flyers for the programs that we have coming up. Thank you all.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us.
I tentatively approve page 17.
Oh, we don't take the one. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, our food is supposed to be delivered now for dinner.
Any minute.
Any minute, it's coming. And so I think this would be a good time to take a break and have dinner, and then we'll start up again after that.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. We'll go now to general government?
General administrations, the yellow tab, it's page 1 to page, let's see where it goes to. 1 through 25.
We'll start at 1 through 13, because more chance economic development.
Okay, so 1 through 13.
1 through 13?
So this is the general government group of accounts. This is the administration of the town. The overall increase is 1.09%. One of the things that should be noted is that, if you remember, we've talked about it a little bit, is that when the personnel services account, when the contracts aren't settled, you lump some the money in there, and then if contracts are settled, they get put in the accounts. So if you look on this front page right here, the beginning, right after the yellow, actually, I'm not sure if it shows at that. Yeah, it does. The revised budget was $443,000 last year. This year, it's $250,000. It's not that that's been a decrease of that amount of money, it's just that that money now is in the salary accounts and the individual accounts, because the contracts were settled. Some things to note in this account, we talked about it because it's in general administration, but economic development is up a little bit because of the Explore Farmington and the flowers. We talked about planning and zoning. That was up a little bit because of, we didn't budget for a full-time person. Now we have. Our insurance is up a little bit because we changed insurance, is it carriers or for Kerma? What are they called? Yeah, it's carriers, and that's more expensive. That's Kerma. But overall, this account is 1.09%. There was some different things that were cut out of this account that I think should be noted. One is the, some additional newsletters, and Erica, where is that and what account is that?
11050, which is council.
Oh, yeah. Page 10. Page 10 is the town council account, and that's where we do our written newsletters from. And Erica, when she was putting this on together, she had requested, if you see on the first line item on page 10, the office supplies, correct? Yeah, the office supplies. She requested $30,000, and I knocked, we put it back down to $15,000. So that would be for close to an additional three newsletters.
That would be three, Kathy?
Yeah, three newsletters. And the other item in the town council account, which, as you can see in the consulting services, there's $10,000 there, and now it's nothing, there's zero. The council did not have $10,000 in that account, but if you remember from, in our contingency account, we moved $10,000 into the town council account, and that was for the Farmington Village for money this year if we needed something for our consultant. So I took that out. Again, I do think that this is something that we would, that we'll need probably for Farmington Village, some money there. We do still have the town council contingency account that has $10,000 in it, but I think we use that for other things, too. So that would be an item that the town council may want to consider, especially with all the items that are going on with Parsons property. So that's, just again, I cut that out. But I'll have a list of everything, but that, I think that just is something you should note. And other than that, I would say that it's very flat.
Questions on these pages?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. First one, page 3, the accounting department. So I see the full-time, the revised budget from 1819 to the, I'm sorry?
On which page?
That is page 3. The 1819 revised budget of $191,000, manager's proposed budget for 1920 of $201,000. So that's like about 5.3, 5.4% increase. I know there's, is that all contractual increases to salary or?
Right. That's the effect of basically catching up on two years' worth of salaries, because the salaries for 1819 were actually budgeted at the 1718 level. So we have the 1819 salary increase plus the 1920 salary increases built into that 2001 number. So it's just basically the staff getting their raises for this year and for next year.
Got it. That's pretty much. Two years, okay. That makes sense, then. And then my other question is page 6, the tax collector. Also, the full-time line there, that's about a 14% increase. If you could just speak to that a little bit, from the 1819 to the 1920.
That's basically the same thing, the salary increases, plus there's a little bit of adjustment. We had some, excuse me, that salary increases plus we had a little bit of an adjustment for, we normally charge off to different accounts, and we got a little bit less being charged off to those accounts.
For instance, that the tax collector, they charge off money to the sewer treatment plant because they collect bills, and so the sewer treatment plant, so we charge part of the salary off, we charge different things to that, and you said it was less, we analyzed.
Yeah, just a little bit less for that. We also have actually a major change in that department because we lost two out of three people at the end of last year. They retired. So now we have, those people were longtime employees, and now we have hired new people at lower salaries, but they also get steps. So in addition to getting their general wage increase, they also get a step increase on their anniversary date. So we had to build that, and they were also.
Okay, thank you.
But was, again, like you said, for the other one, it's two years' worth of?
Right. It's also two years' worth of salaries.
Two years' worth of salaries, yeah.
Other questions?
Yes. We're going through page 13, right?
Yes.
All right. On page 12, the professional services for the town attorney. It seems that we have fairly consistently budgeted $185,000 and fairly consistently been below that. I'm just curious if we've reached, if we've ever had $185,000 or if there's any big issues anticipated for 2019, 2020.
We've actually exceeded that on several occasions prior to, the past few years, probably about four years ago, we were consistently exceeding $200,000. We dropped off a couple of large cases at that point. We are actually, next year, we thought about dropping this back down because of what we've been spending, but we have right now three large cases, and all three of them are more than likely going to go to court. And so one case is right now, since December, we've been getting charged about $14,000 a month for that one case. And like I said, we have two other cases that more than likely, the probability is very good we'll go to court on those, and those will be extensive cases.
Assessment cases?
We have one assessment, we have two assessment cases that'll go, will actually go to court, one of which is large. We have an insurance appeal, which, and we also have another case, we're being sued by a, we're being sued, and that case is actually driving us, driving up some pretty extensive legal bills right now.
And are all of these fees Halloran and Sage?
No. Yeah, Lisa.
Sewerage treatment?
Oh, the three I'm talking about are all Halloran and Sage.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, but the account doesn't, isn't not just for Halloran and Sage.
I'd assume it would also include bond counsel and other.
Yeah.
It includes labor counsel, land use, and general litigation, or general counsel. It does not include bond counsel. Bond counsel is in the debt service budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Just following up on that, for the legal work that we're doing with the treatment plant that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, is that out of this bucket? We're getting two.
For the treatment plant? Isn't that paid for out of the treatment budget?
So that's part, that's a separate attorney?
Oh, 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 that.
Insurance case.
That's the insurance case. The insurance case is paid for out of this account, but in general, legal bills for water pollution control are paid for out of that, and I can talk to you offline why this one is not.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yes. On page 4, it looks like there's some changes in the personnel and shifting around there. Can we talk about them?
On page 4, what did she say on the table?
No.
Oh, staffing. What that is, is that right now, our receptionist in the front is actually half of her time. She was the secretary at the treatment plant, and when the treatment plant was under the renovations, we moved her down, and she does half work for the treatment plant, and she's also our receptionist. She's going back to the treatment plant, and then we're going to hire two part-time receptionists in the account instead of having a full-time person, which is usually what we've had historically. It's just that when the treatment plant, she moved down.
Okay. So you had people leave and she came in at the same time?
No. Well, yes. Kat was originally hired for a different position, not receptionist. She has many more qualifications than that, but you know, she got her foot in the door, and we had some good changes in our office, and she's with us now. So then it came at the same time the treatment plant was going to be under renovation, so Karen came down, and now we're going to kind of go back, you know, really over the last 20 years, for the last 18 or so, 17, we've had part-time people, either one or two.
I blocked out about that, Kat. Completely, I completely forgot you were up there.
Like, she'd been with you forever. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Just, and I'm not sure if you've talked about it, planning zoning overall, it had an increase of 16%.
Bruce, could you give me the page?
That's what I'm trying.
Oh, 18.
Oh, we should not be talking about 18. We should not be talking about 18.
Oh, right, we'll get to that.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
No, no, we did that with Russ, remember?
All right.
And we talked about the salary for the full planner and then the offer.
I'm there, okay. Yes, you're right. Thank you.
Other question?
Okay. So Paulo, what were the numbers you said?
1 through 13.
Okay.
Are we all set?
Yep.
I tentatively approve pages 1 through 13.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no exceptions. Next is 16 and 17.
16 and 17, okay, so 16 So 16 is our regional associations and that's CROG, CCM, COST and the Health District. The one outlier is I think the Health District. I don't know if I mentioned it sometime, the Health District is undergoing that they're looking to become, we're a regional health district and we're looking to become accredited and there's some costs associated with becoming an accredited health district, which I do support that, I'm the vice chair on the board there, and that we're trying to move up to be more of a, an accredited health district and so there's some additional costs. So our fees are going up a little bit more than they usually go up in that account. And other than that, I think most of the other regional associations have been pretty flat.
Questions? CJ?
Just a comment on COST. I believe COST is the organization that was looking into, two years ago, the legal fight against the state when they wanted to foist the teachers' retirement plan on the towns. I think they'll still, they will probably move ahead with that if that gets any legs, so.
Both COST and CCM are valuable. COST is mainly for smaller towns and a lot of their issues are for much smaller towns than us, but that said, they, because they're, we've, we fit in with them too and they are very active on different things. Some of the things that they lobby for aren't really relevant for us because it's such a small, such small towns, but we also are with CCM and that's another lobbyist group that we're involved in. And again, most of the issues relevant to them, they're the big municipal lobbyists, are good for us, but again, some of it isn't because they're cities and things like that, but they try to balance it out. So that's why I think it's important for us to kind of be involved in both of them so we can get both perspectives of what's going on.
Questions?
Okay, Madam Chair. On page 17, it looks like the in-kind contributions is a new line item.
Yeah.
Split out from some.
It's budgeted every year, but the money's moved to departments. It's when, when there's an event in town and somebody comes and asks the council for some assistance, either with police services or support for having the public works, people come out to put barricades or whatever for their event, we charge to the department and we move the money from here to the, that department to cover the cost. So you should never see actual expenditure, but you should see the money moved out at some point.
Yeah, and that's, over the last couple of years, a change of, because what happened before is that we've, we had some various non-for-profit groups that would ask for various things and it became just, it just wasn't logistically good because we didn't have any money for it and we'd come to the council and be like for $500 and it would be for this and it would be the same groups every year. And so instead we do the in-kind services and just budget for it every year and it's the same three groups. But the new item is, which it's changed in here, if you look last year, Tunxus, no, is it Tunxus Hose?
Tunxus Hose, the last one.
Yeah, so Tunxus Hose had the carnival last year, right?
They always have the carnival. We increased it because the 225th celebration, they wanted extra fireworks.
Right, so Tunxus Hose last year got an increase because they had an increase because of their anniversary and now that went back to their normal amount and now East Farms is having their anniversary, so they asked and that's where that $5,000 is for them.
Other questions? Go ahead.
So the library grant is here and it looks like, and I had asked the question about, just to give a historical perspective, it looks, and now the question is answered, aligned with, the increase is aligned with whatever the target is. But we as a council, we don't see anything specific as far as revenue or other revenue that they get in expenditures. We don't get any kind of line item.
I mean.
It's just flat grant that.
It's a flat grant that the library gives me a presentation and shows the revenue and this, but the council doesn't have really any oversight over it. I'm sure the library, if you wanted a, wanted a more financial statement for it to break out the number, I'm sure they'd be happy to give it to you, but usually it's just a lump sum that they ask for and when they come to present to me, they just show the revenues and the expenditures and they have other revenues that they get, but I think the town supports close to 90% of their budget.
Small amount of what that other stuff is.
Fundraising, the friends.
Yeah.
You know, fees.
Well, they also, they have the endowment. And whatever the endowment earns in income for the year, they, they get some proportion of that. So they're, you're probably looking at another $300,000 to $400,000 in addition to what we give them, comes from other sources.
Okay. Other questions?
Just to follow up on that, FVG LA would be the place you'd find that information that, because they'll have the accounting that the library accounts to them. And as Joe was saying, you get support from the FVG LA and also the friends of the Farmington Library help out over here.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay.
Tentatively approve page 16 and 17.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Now we have. 21 through 25. And these look to me, and I think that they're our town buildings, our town hall, our Staples House, which we already talked about, our old firehouse, our Unionville Museum, and the insurance I talked about already, that is, KERMA is more expensive, so that account has increased. We do have a couple of smaller, you know, the old firehouse and the Unionville Museum and some just smaller accounts that we do put money in for basic maintenance and some utilities. Oh, where was that? Oh, in the town. Oh, that's one thing, that's a good point, Erica. In page 21, something new that we worked with the library on in collaboration is that, as you know, our longstanding custodian retired from the town of Farmington. We hired a new custodian, but the new custodian is part, is shared with the library now, so it's shared.
25%. So they, they've had some staffing shifts. Their janitor retired as well and we, we came together and were able to make a system that I think is going to work out nicely where our custodian, you know, basically is now taking care of this campus. And we both have cleaning contracts for heavy-duty stuff, you know, but he's going to be able to take care of the inside and outside of this campus.
And so the library pays 25% of the, his salary and benefits. So that's something new.
Great.
That we've worked on.
Any other questions?
Tentatively approve page 21 through 25.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
What page is that, Joe?
One.
Tab. First blue tab, this is the benefits account, page 66 and 67. This is a large number account. This is our benefits for our employees and I'll ask Joe just to walk through the line items with you guys for this one.
Okay. Just quickly, the social security is up, is up about $20,000 and it's based on salaries. It's simply tied to the amount of compensation we pay out that's, that's taxable under social security. Pensions is our, are two things. It's the pension contribution for the defined benefit pension plan and it's also the contribution, the town's matching contributions to employees hired up to 2011 who are in the defined contribution plan. The health insurance was our big increase this year. We had a pretty tough renewal. We're having a pretty, like the board, we're in a, we're in a tough cycle right now, difficult cycle and our claims experience is going up and more importantly, our stop loss and premiums have been going up substantially. So we have a sizable increase in our health insurance for next year. Hopefully that'll level out at some point, but right now, like I said, our claims experience is not good. Everything else is relatively flat. Workers' comp is down and part of the benefit of the work, the reason for the workers' comp decreases, it's kind of an offset to the KERMA liability insurances. Because we went to KERMA and because we packaged our workers' comp with our, our LAP policies, they gave us a credit on the workers' comp, so that helped bring down the reduction in our, our workers' comp. And also we are having a good experience with the workers' comp, so our rates are, are not going up next year. We're going to have flat rates for next year. And then heart and hypertension is just simply the account we use to pay for heart and hypertension claims for our public safety employees. That's both for medical, legal and if we do any settlements.
Okay, is this where we're going to talk, the pensions? We need to talk about what the Board of Education piece and our piece and how that's changing?
So if you look at the pension piece, I don't, I don't know if everyone's aware, so this is, again, it's for our old historical pensions that we have and then it's for our 401 for all our new hires. We also on this, in this account, we pay for the Board of Education, non-teachers, their pensions. So that, part of that 3.46 number is the board's people on the old-fashioned pension plan. So that number, Joe, is what?
About a third, a little over.
A little over.
The board is 1.549,000 of that total.
1.5, yeah. So that's incorporated in that number. So the issue that we've been talking about is that now we've changed over with the contract, the board has changed over the contract and all their new hires are now not going to be on the, the, the town did it for the Board of Education and now they're, all their employees are going to be on a traditional 401 plan. And just like we do, we have to now support, like we do our employees, what is our matching, like 6%?
6%.
6%. And the board, you guys negotiated with the board what was their matching number? Same amount, 6%. So all their new people, 6%. And the question is, is that where is that money going? Are we still putting it into the town side of the budget? The board didn't put any money in their budget and we didn't put any money in our budget for that. We, as you remember, on the front page of the budget, we also have this teacher requirement, retirement, which is 246,000. That eventually, if it happens, which I'm not sure if it is, is going to be a question too, is that where is that number going to be funded in the future? Is it going to go, where, where is it going to go? History? Joe, I mean, if towns do it in different ways. Some have the towns doing it, some have the Board of Education's doing it. It's a, you know, again, it's a substantial part of the town budget. Again, it's really a policy decision of the council of if they want to continue to do that. I don't know if the decision has to be made in, in this budget where it exactly goes. If we still are keeping it in, we could put in the teacher's retirement and not, what did we call it? I don't think we called it teacher retirement. We, yeah, teacher retirement, we could call it and put it in there and just call it retirement. We can put it in our budget, but we have to add another $40,000 into the budget to take care of that.
So the 40,000 though, is because of the HSA plan? No. And what, okay. Explain it to me again. Well, this, the 40 though?
Yeah, is the 40, yeah. And so again, they're, all their employees now are in the pension plan. That number is in there and that's 1.5 million dollars, a part of that money. So now that, that's been closed.
Can I just, that one point, and I'm sorry.
That's okay, keep going.
The, the 1.5 million is that certified or non-certified teachers?
All non-certified.
All non-certified teachers?
Yeah. Because there's, it's not teachers, Bruce.
Oh, employees.
Yeah.
People, yes. FTEs.
Yeah, because the teachers are in the state pension plan.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, so these are, so 1.5 of that 3.4, that money is for non-certified employees in the Board of Education. So now that's been closed. We're still going to have that money. It's going to start going down because anyone that is hired with the board that's non-certified is now not going to be on a traditional pension plan, they're going to be on a 401 plan. And the 401, the town or the school on our side, the town contributes 6% and the employee contributes 6%. That 6% needs to come from somewhere. So part of this 3.4 is our portion of all our new hires are 6%. So we have, we pay for our old employees, the traditional pension, then we pay 6% to all the new employees, then we, and now the question is, are we going to take on the, the board's new employees too in this account? And like I said, I don't know if the question has to be answered now, but the school didn't put $40,000 in their budget and we didn't put $40,000 in our budget. So again, it's something that we have to consider, what we're going to do. And it goes to, again, this teacher retirement, where is that money eventually going to go if it happens to? That's, you know, that's, and hopefully it's not going to, but this 256 is 256 this year. I think it went to 500 next year and 800.
It's going to continue to increase.
Continue to increase.
That's the expectation.
Right.
And at this time, in different budgets, town, Board of Ed, they're doing things differently. Some that I had heard of, put it in their budget. The true, I mean, the Board of Ed had it in their budget and some it's in, it's not. So it doesn't seem like there's a rule of thumb yet, I don't. CJ?
Couple of questions. First, so this 40,000, this is the equivalent employees to that 45%, the 1.549, a similar type of employees?
Yeah.
But they're on the new plan now?
Yes.
So they're on the 401K type plan, okay. So from a policy point of view, you would think they would stay together, but how long have we been doing that? I mean, this is a long-term policy, how long has that been going on?
A long time, as long as I'm here.
As long as you've been here, okay. I mean, policy-wise, it seemed like a bad policy to mix the two. It's nice to see equivalent budgets staying together. The teachers' pension, as Nancy was pointing out, is a whole different issue because this is going to be a massive potential cost if the state is successful in pushing their burden upon the towns. The towns who didn't negotiate didn't have anything to do with any of those pension liabilities and the state, which is I think just about under 50% funded in their teacher pensions, so because of their mismanagement, they want us to pick up the slack. But that's not what we're really talking about here. Our question is where that goes and I think that's going to be a big policy decision we have to make. We don't put the teachers' salaries in the town side. So I'm not sure why we put the pension there, but that's, that's going to be a big question. And this is, right now, this is more of a placeholder, waiting to see what the state does.
That, yes.
But yeah, I'd be interested to hear everybody else's thoughts on where that should go.
To kind of follow up on, and I agree on the 40,000 with CJ there. My initial thoughts on the 256 are kind of from my brief understanding is, doesn't seem like it has a home on either side right now. I almost like it, I mean, I don't like it being here, but I like it where it is if it has to be somewhere because as this number exists, if it does exist, and as it grows, it's, it's going to put pressure on our budgets moving forward and it'd be nice to, you know, if we're going to get our budgets passed to say, you know, this percentage is out of our control, this, this is getting pushed on us from the state's mismanagement, not ours. As opposed to if it just gets baked in somewhere, it's not as easy to articulate that out to the general public. So I, I kind of like having it there. Just to, you know, easily show people, you know, where those pressures are coming from.
No. And I think, yeah, no, it's, that's kind of, I mean, one, neither one of the school or the town wants it in their budget.
No, and that's why it doesn't really have homes.
But that said, that's why we put it there too, is because I think it is a good, a good place for it now and maybe, maybe in the future too. Who knows? I don't know legally if we keep on going, if they're going to force where it shows because there's some debate on what the legislative language says, whether they're going to say it has to go in a school budget or it has to go where it is. That hasn't been.
Identified yet.
Identified yet. So I think that where it is, is a good spot for it. Again, it's, it's, again, a policy, I mean, I think you have two, two sides of the coin here. Past practice shows that at least for this pension, it's been on the town side of the budget. It's past practice, there's no question about it. It's, it's on that side of the budget. But on the flip side of it, should it have ever been on the town side and is it really, I don't, I don't like the word transparent because it's, I don't think it's that, but really how much of the town's budget is being spent on pensions on the school side of the budget and do people understand that? And so really that, that, no one knows. I mean, you can go to the in-kind services and things. And do people understand that? And so, really, that, no one knows. I mean, you can go up to the in-kind services and things like that. But if you really wanted to know what the pensions are, you would think that that whole amount is on the town's side of the budget, when really, in reality, the majority of that money is actually on the school's side of the budgets for school employees. Again, it's the same pot of money altogether, but it's, you know, I think there's two sides of the equation here. It's really a policy decision of, and the point was now, is that now that we changed it over, again, to my perspective, we were like to the school, put it in your budget, and to theirs, they were like, put it in your budget. And so here we are with the 40,000 dollars.
And just, I just want to clarify, right now, the way the budget is put together, that 256 is a separate line. So when we say leave it where it is, it's putting it on a totally separate line, so everyone sees what this number is that we're looking at.
Yeah. We kept it on like the front page here, yeah.
Yes, Bruce.
Just point of clarification, so the 40,000, the 401K, the new plan for the non-certified, the 6%, who was at the table to negotiate that 6%?
I did it.
You did it. So was the town at the table to negotiate?
Yeah, technically, the way that their contract and pension stuff is written, the board does not negotiate that with their, that union, that non-certified union. So I had to not pretend, but act like they were our employees, and that was our issue. So I separated, we tried to negotiate together, Beth knows, she was there, and they kicked us out. So we had to have a separate negotiations with the group on our own on this issue. And, you know, we were, they came, you know, to the conclusion that this was the way things are, blah, 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 and we were able to mimic our plan to their plan. So it did work out. And for instance, my next object is going to be the nurses' contract, because the nurses' contract, well, they're not even a real union, but the nurses are still there, right? So once we do the nurses, and I will have to, you know, send the paperwork to the nurses and start negotiating with them, it's, then we'll have all the non-teachers covered.
And they'll all be?
Under a 401.
How long have you done the nurses?
Never done the nurses.
No, I was going to say, we probably, the board always did the nurses.
For pensions, we have to. It's a town issue.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we actually, God, it took a year or so of discussions even with attorneys, their attorney, our attorney, and how it would work, and what we would do, and how I'd approach it. And so at least we got that covered, and now we can move forward. So the next time, AFT, or not AFT, whatever the group is that just settled, the custodians, everybody, they, when they're up again, if we so desire to change pension, we'll do it at that, so we have to do it the next time they're up.
Did you do it with them previously?
Never, no, and that.
I mean, not just the nurses, but the other group?
No, this is our first time.
And can you, I'm confused, why did this happen?
No, what, let me explain, is that it's always been under the assumption that the school was doing the, like, the pensions. They're on the same pensions as we are, okay? So when we changed over all our people to the new hires, we had this whole thing about why didn't the school change over to their new hires? Why isn't that happening? And the reason why is because legally, they're not allowed to do that. We have to do it, which we didn't know that we had to do. So then, we then, took us a year to get that all squared away, and then we then found out, because we thought we could negotiate with the board and negotiate with them. And they basically said, only if the union allowed us to do that. And the union said, no. So then we had to come out, and then Erica and our attorneys negotiated with the union, not with the board, with the union. And we did, we modeled our plan, their plan, exactly off of what we have for our new hires. So now, we're all on the same page.
So, so when you found out that you guys had to do the negotiation, is it because it's a policy on the town, like?
I think it's.
Because these are not your employees.
No, but the way their contract is written, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but there was language in there that it's the town and the union. Everything else in that contract speaks to the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed is not the negotiator of pension.
So it's just the language within the contract that prevented that negotiation to happen together, okay. Okay, so.
Yeah, and they're, and just to further this, so, but they were still done separate?
Right, because they wouldn't, they, we are allowed.
They could have been done this together.
Yes, and we were under, we've been told we're allowed to negotiate with them. But we were told, we had thought we'd negotiate as part of the board's negotiation, and the pension would be part of that.
Yeah, they would just sit in, and when that topic came up, I would speak to it, or our attorney would speak to it. And then, you know, they would do all the rest of the things, next time, whenever it is. And then, you know, it, single negotiating on one item is never easy, because there's nothing to fight with.
Right, right.
So we thought it in their advantage to have us there, but they chose not to do that.
And it's not that much different, though, really, in reality, to ours, because we have, we have contracts, and then we have pension contracts, okay? Some of our unions, I think, I'm not sure of all of them, have that same language. I think our police, in their old, old language, that says, we have to negotiate the pension separately, unless the police say that we can do it with the regular contract. Usually, we do it with the regular contract, because we use it as a bargaining chip. So we negotiate it both together. So that's what we thought that the board, not the board, the union on the board's side would do. And they told us no. And so then we had to have separate negotiations, just on a one issue.
And you know, you don't negotiate pension every year, of course. You know, and then sometimes there's language about moratoriums, X amount of years until you do it again, because it would be hard to manage that, right? Different pension, there's the calculations, the equations and stuff, you don't want to mess with that every single year. You know, we've done it in the last few years, that was our goal for our negotiations. So it's not like something, I'm probably, probably not going to do it again with this group for a little bit. It's not like in three years' time, we're going to negotiate pension again, most likely.
Okay. And I just want to make it, I think I'm clear, and I just want to make it clear. So the 40,000 dollars is the new 401K plan for the non-certified folks at the school, the BOE.
Yeah, let's just clarify that, put a caveat on that. We don't know what the contribution should be. We've met with the board, we've discussed it with the board's staff, and our best estimate, and quite honestly, it's our best guess, is that in the first year of this contract, for next year, we think we would need 40,000, $40,000 for matching salaries.
So why is that, Joe? Why wouldn't we know?
How many new hires?
Because we've asked them to give us an estimate of what they would hire each year for, in that particular category.
For new employees.
And they were unable to come up with a number. So we, based on information we've had from past, every year they give us a census of their employee, their non-certified employees, and based on looking at a census from year to year, and the turnover that took place on that census, I did an estimate of 40,000 dollars based on their turnover and based on their average salary. So that's the best we could come up with.
But these are their employees, so we don't have any, there's no.
Right, we don't have any controls to how many people they hire, or the turnover, or the salaries.
You have to remember, there's paras in this group, right? There's custodians, secretaries, paras, I think even tutors at some point. But there's a lot of people in it. And even a group, think about how many paras are in seven, eight, nine, 10 schools, or whatever it is, seven schools, that's a lot of people. And those people change over a lot, you know? So it could, that's where these numbers are coming from.
It's, again, one of the reasons, it's brand new for both of us, so this is a brand new program, and it's great. I mean, we're very.
But it's the 401.
It's the 401, and it's great. And I guess really, though, the bottom line is, is that, to my perspective, is that, one, that the council's aware that we, first of all, we just, neither one of us budgeted for it, because we thought. And two, is that if a policy change, and again, I'm not suggesting that a policy change has to be done on Saturday to make a policy change. If a policy change is going to be done, this would probably be the time that a policy change would be done, because it's a completely new program, and it's their employees. But if not, I, like I said, there's two sides of the equation, and because of the teachers' retirement is in there now.
It seems like two things that are, I don't, the word unknown isn't correct, but there are two things that are in flux, let me say, because we don't know, well, certainly with the teacher retirement, we're not sure. And we have an idea, but that's, we don't know, and we don't know whether that's going to be April that that happens, or, you know, whether it happens in this session, or if the session is extended, or how they move that forward. And, and the 40,000 is just going to be your best guess right now, estimate, which we just have to see, I guess. Go ahead.
So I just want to, so part of the reason why I was asking these questions, and Joe, maybe you can help me understand this as well. So out of the 1.5 million dollars, that's the old, non-certified employees, how did we estimate that number? When they bring in, when they used to bring in new employees in, how did you guys estimate that number?
Those numbers are your, the contribution to the pension plan, to the defined benefit plan, is a year behind number. So what happens is, as mentioned, every year, we have an actuary, an independent actuary, who values the plan, and comes up with the liability, and comes up with all the factors in the plan, and develops the contribution level. That information is based on, the census information that we provide to them, and the earnings we provide to them per employee is based on the prior year. So in July, for example, in July of 19, both the town and the Board of Education will supply a census to the actuary, and it will show every employee who can, who's a participant in the plan, and their earnings for the prior year. That is used to develop the contribution numbers for the contribution that you're looking at, that we're talking about now.
So the 401K, it's a little bit more volatile, because whatever they put in is what we should be matching.
401K is a dollar one from the beginning, so if you hire an employee today,
Right.
and their next paycheck, you have to match 6% of whatever you're paying them that week.
Right, so that's where it gets a little.
That's where it gets, right.
Okay.
And this is the high end. This is if they maxed what we would have to do, the 40,000.
Force them to do 6 and 6. They have to do 6.
They have to do 6. Oh, okay, I wasn't sure if that was a given or a question.
Oh, so yeah, that's kind of. Over time, the 40,000 is just what we think, you know, as, as those shift from less DB to more DC, you know.
Right, I mean, to give you an example. And when the town started, our first, our first year, we had one employee in the DC plan. They were making like $50,000 a year, so 6% times $50,000. That was in 2013. In 2019, our contributions up, for our DC people, is up to 225,000 dollars. So it grows rapidly as your turnover takes place.
So then, just to clarify if I'm understanding it correctly, it's not really a 6% match, it's a 6% guaranteed?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, that's a better.
That's right, that's right. Because I didn't, I wasn't sure that the 6 was a given, or it was a.
They have to do 6%, and we match the 6, right.
Okay.
Oh, they, they have to contribute 6%? Okay, so they have to contribute 6, and they get the match? And that's, both of those are required?
Yes.
Oh, I see, too. There's no choice in this. Did you?
I think there's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Beth.
I wanted to pick up a little bit on what Erica was saying with the negotiation with the non-certified group. So other unions, and you may have said this, or it was said at some point, the other unions that are with Board of Ed, that's never been separate. That negotiation for the pension has never.
Well, there's really only, yeah, I mean, what we just did with this group this year, or last year, was the first time for that group. Nurses would be next, and after that, there's no one else, because either they're teachers, their supervisors, who are teachers, the administrators, so those two contracts are all teachers. And then the board themselves, I mean, I can't dictate what they do, you know, the next time they get a new business manager, or the next time they get a new superintendent secretary. You know what I mean? Those people are not, they're not affiliated like we are. You know, I don't know what Kathy will do with them, but those are the only other people that could, you know, get into the 401.
Okay. And we talked about, I think someone mentioned, other towns are doing it.
Both ways, both ways.
But traditionally, do we find that we're municipalities showing the pension for board staff in the town budget?
I know, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if it's shown differently in, so you're asking if it's, if the town is making the contribution, is it shown differently in the budget? Is that what your question?
Or who makes the contribution? Joe has a little bit more variety of experience in towns.
And as Kathy indicated, it's different in different places. I've worked in too many towns to count, but this is the only town I've ever been in where the town makes the contribution for the non-certified board employees. Conversely, in discussions with the superintendent of schools, she, you know, she named off, I think, two towns that the town budgets for the board, the non-certified staff contribution, including Wrench, where she came from. So, you know, it's probably a mixed bag.
And again, I'm not saying that if we're interested in doing any kind of policy change, you all are, I think there's quite a bit of due diligence that still has to be done. Like, again, how, what is the ratio? Is it normal? I don't, I have, like, I don't know, you know, we don't really know. But all I know is that in Farmington, at least since I've been here, this is how it's been done.
And I mean, just one thing, someone mentioned the in-kind services report. That is something that, just, this isn't the only issue, right? I mean, when you look at our capital plan, you'll see teachers, and you'll see mower, and different things like that for high school things. I mean, we mow all their lawns, we mow all their fields, we do any number of things that, for them. You know, at the end of the day, like Kathy said, we are the same group, but I think it just gets down to some of these times of year like this where you give percentage increases, and, well, we're really paying for all this other stuff that's the board's, but that's the way it is, and that's where it is in many towns. It just, it just becomes, I don't know, I don't want to use the word territorial, but you can see where, you know, our budget increase is affected by stuff we do for them, too.
Well, it is, because the in-kind is 3, 4 million dollars or something, you know? But I think it's, it's going to be hard for us to make a decision, I mean, to make a policy decision, you can't do that overnight.
No.
And I think what you're saying, Kathy, I appreciate that, you know, it's going to take some due diligence. So I think we're going to have to decide where we think it is best right now, and then I think we're going to have to look into it. I honestly, I, you know, I don't have, I see things going different ways, and my concern is the state, too. What is actually going to happen in the end, as far as what, you know, how much we're going to be, we know we have a number right now, but that's still up in the air.
And, and again, a lot of this has come to a, really, had because of the teacher retirement, and it's, again, that is going, and I hope it's not, but it's, again, that's, that's got to be somewhere, where is that going to be? Whether it's dictated, whether it's going to be on the front, whether it's going to be, you know, are we going to continue the past practice of putting it in the municipal budget? Is that now going to go on? So, again, the, I guess, for us, for tomorrow, is that 40,000 dollars has to go back into the budget. And wherever that goes, we can put it somewhere. And, you know, again, I'm not going to be encouraging that we cancel out this teacher retirement in March. We have to see how things go in April. If this is, because CJ and I were talking yesterday, it's eerily quiet about the teacher retirement. It's, and that's kind of scary, because there's not a lot of people talking about it. Everyone's in tolls or in regionalization of school districts, and they're not talking about this. And it's, it's a huge change. And so it's either, it's going to come out like at the end, and all of a sudden, the law's going to be there, and we're going to be paying in three years a million dollars, and it's just going to keep on going up, or somehow it's just, it's not an issue, and it's going to go away. But we have in April, we'll have more time to talk about it. So I guess my point is, in some ways, if we wanted to, even just for tomorrow as a placeholder, put that 40 extra thousand dollars in this teacher retirement account and keep it as a placeholder. Or, I mean, it's, you know, you can put it in one or the other accounts, but it has to go, but.
It has to go somewhere.
It has to go somewhere.
It has to go somewhere, but the 40,000 is a definite, we just don't know where to put it. And the 256,000 is a placeholder, just in case this comes down. And I know in the past, you've budgeted for, you know, less grants, kind of taking the temperature of what's happening with the state and what all the proposals are, and I know the timing really stinks, because we just don't know, and we have to do our budget. So I just want to make that distinction. This 256 is, is kind of a worst-case scenario number, we think.
Right.
Based on your best guess.
Exactly. But the only thing that is different about this and the revenue, the grants, just to, just to be clear about that, is that this is actually paying cash out. Revenues is not getting your revenue in. And so, and, which again, is more disturbing to me in the bigger picture, because now, you're actually, I'd much rather get less state grants in than us, that we're getting charged and actually writing a check to the state of Connecticut, which they can continue to increase and increase. So, again, when, when, with the grants, when you're being conservative in some different things, that's just less revenue coming in, and you can kind of adjust your spending. Here, you're. and you can kind of adjust your spending. Here, you're actually writing a check out, which is much more difficult. So, but I understand your point, that the forty thousand has to go back in, the two fifty-six may be coming out.
And two other things. One, to, to talk about the grants, two, this year, from what I can see, and we'll, we'll talk about them, but you, you have not, you've budgeted for what they've said we're gonna get. You've not taken away any funds as you did last year. I mean, you said you were, you know, we were really concerned, and we did a really, we were very cautious. This year, the number's there, of our expectation.
Right.
So...
And that's gonna be, we'll, we, if we still feel like going tonight, that would be the next, next item, would be the revenue side.
Okay. So, with this right now, why don't we, it's a lot to think about. CJ?
I do have just two, two questions before we leave the topic. Do any towns have a separate line item for all their pensions? Instead of having the town, since this is a town and board item, would that be a logical, I mean, is it ever done that way, where you've got a separate pension line item?
I, I've never seen it that way. We actually, back in, during one council, one council chair's term, he advocated for that, but it never went anywhere. But I've, I've never seen it in any other budgets that I've looked at.
Because that's, I think that's, we're gonna have to have a further discussion. I don't think this is something we're gonna decide in this budget, but going forward, I think we need to discuss, does it make sense to have any of these pensions? Do we keep them all in one place or not? With the forty thousand, it seems to me, the simple course of action would be to keep it where all the other ones are right now, and get through this budget. If we decide we need to separate them out at a different time, we do so. The really, I think, keeping that teachers' retirement, the two fifty-six on a separate line, is critical. As Kathy mentioned, it's two fifty-six this year, double it again next year, double it again the next year. That's to get us to twenty-five percent. The goal, I guarantee you, of the state is not just to get us to pay twenty-five percent. And unlike our pension, where we're seventy-five percent funded, there's no guarantee that us paying this money in is gonna make the state's pension any more funded than that forty-nine percent they are right now. So, they can continue to mismanage this money they're pulling out of all the towns, not just us, but every other town that's paying in, and they might never improve the issue. In, when you have unemployment, in my business, if we have a perfect record, and we have to pay something into unemployment, there's a separate line item from the state on unemployment, that every business in the state pays the interest on the loan the state of Connecticut took from the federal government, because Connecticut can't manage their unemployment. They're trying to do the same thing here. They're passing that along to the businesses, they're trying to pass along to the town, the stopgap for their mismanagement. And I would hope, as we've heard, I mean, the, everybody is talking about tolls, everyone is talking about regionalization, no one is bringing this up. This is the elephant in the room. We need to pay close attention to this, and we need to start yelling about this, because this twenty-five percent, which would be today, a million dollars, is absolutely gonna go up if they get their foot in the door. And we have to fight this, because this isn't something that we had anything to do with. So, I just, I think all of us here need to talk to everyone, everyone out watching this, I think we really need to pay close attention to getting the teachers' pensions liability put on the towns, because that can be a huge dollar item. When we're looking at pennies in our budget, trying to figure out how we keep these little percentages close, an extra million dollars, two million dollars, three million dollars, that we're basically writing a check to the state for something, they just want more money. If they manage it properly, they would be fully funded, and there would be no questions. So, that's my rant from there.
Well, and also, it doesn't, we don't, we don't negotiate the contracts.
Right.
You know, the, the contracts are, the teachers, the teachers' contracts are, are not within our negotiation at all. And yet, we take on that, you know, the town, but the, but it's just difficult with what our numbers are when we're looking at all this. Okay, so, any other comments at the moment?
And just page sixty-seven is your other, that's your contingency account, that you usually put in ten thousand dollars for just various things that they come up. Last year, we took that, I mean, this year, we took the ten thousand, right?
We took the ten thousand.
Ten thousand, and put it in for, to help...
For the bill.
The council's budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We put it in the council's budget.
Okay. So, sixty-six and sixty-seven, anything else?
I tentatively approve sixty-six and sixty-seven.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
The next one is debt, which is the orange tab on page sixty-eight. And Joe can go through the, the debt account. And that, again, this number on the debt nine-two, nine-two-nine-eight-three-six-two on page sixty-eight, just a reminder that that matches your debt number on your front page. That's the same debt number.
Questions?
So, Joe wants to go through that?
Right now, debt, it's built in, for a debt increase of ten point seven percent for next year. Question came up before, where we pay for bond council, we pay for it on the first line there, the professional services. Next year, we had a budget of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Lease financing is for two leases that we have, I think explained before, we have an energy performance lease from, from twenty-twelve, and we have a lease for the purchase of the streetlights, which we took out last year. The twenty-twelve, the energy performance lease is a sixteen-year lease, we're in, we're in the fifth or sixth year of that, and the other lease is a seven-year lease, we're in the second year of that. Bond interest and bond principles for the currently outstanding debt, plus we've built in, one, we're doing a bond sale next, in two months, May of, this year, we'll be doing a bond sale, approximately four point four million dollars. We've built in the principal and interest for that sale into the principal and interest account. And a, a line that says CFW, that's the clean water fund loan, we have budgeted for the existing loan we have, which is thirty-three million dollars, which we took out a year ago, and we're paying back on. And then the second, we built in for a second loan, which will probably be the plant, right now, we think that that's, that loan will be taken out in December or January of, of, either December of twenty-nineteen or January of twenty-twenty, depending upon when the final completion of the treatment plan is. And then we would start paying back principal and interest on that loan in March of twenty-twenty.
Just, just one. The bond principal and bond interests don't match the preceding page. I, if I'm looking that correctly, the CFW makes up the difference between those two?
No, the reason why it doesn't match, the, well, the chart on the previous, on the left-hand side, is a little bit confusing, because it, it factors in all the outstanding long-term debt, plus the clean water, the existing clean water fund loan. It does not include the new clean water fund loan that'll be coming out next year, and it also does not show the, the bond sale that we'll be doing in May of this year. So, there's a principal and interest payment built into all three of those accounts. The bond interest account has a principal, interest payment built into it for the new debt that's coming on in May. The bond principal account has a, a principal payment built into it for the, that same debt issuance that'll occur in May. And then the loan has the three months' worth of loans for, I think, I believe it's three months they built it. Yeah, three months' worth of loans, payments on a new loan that'll be coming out next year. So, that's why those numbers don't match. What you're seeing on the left-hand side is the actual debt that the town has right now, does not factor in any new debt that will be coming on board in the next six months, these six to seven months.
Yeah, Joe, do you know roughly what the total payment would be for the second clean water fund loan, once that comes into effect next year, just to anticipate what type of increase we would be looking at?
The additional amount would be about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
The, the current one is, just to give an idea, the current loan that we have in place, that's two million, four, forty-four thousand dollars a year. And the, the new one that's gonna come out would be four, should be around four hundred and eighty thousand, four seventy-eight, eight sixty-seven.
Okay, gotcha. That's helpful. Yeah, I saw the existing one was two million, and I was wondering how the, how the second one would compare to that. Thank you.
And that, that's basically, it'd be about a fourteen million dollar loan, it'll be fourteen, fourteen point four million dollar loan, and the first payment would come due in March of twenty-twenty. So, that's actually four months' worth of payments.
Other questions?
I tentatively approve page sixty-eight.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Are you up for doing revenues?
Sure.
And then, so, rev, but before we do revenues, I just wanted to mention one thing. So, we've gone through all the expenditures in the budget. So, if we go back to our front page, we talked education, we talked town, we talked debt service, we've talked capital improvements, the CIP purchase, that's another thing we need to talk about tomorrow, and then the teachers' retirement. So, we have done that. Just on, one of the things that I just wanted to make note of is that we will have a list, again, of some of the things that we mentioned today that we want, that we cut out, and there's no more than that. That's what we mentioned today. So, those few items. But just so you know, that one of the things is that when we receive the budget, our budget request came in, at, the department requests were at thirty million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, and...
Wait, say that again, Kathy.
Thirty million, eight hundred and eighty thousand and five dollars. And we brought it down to thirty million, three hundred and eleven thousand, six, five, four. So, we cut out five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars, which is one point eight four percent. So, we started at a budget with, my department heads at four point three four percent, and we brought it down to two point five percent. So, we cut out five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. And most of that, other than the few items that we talked about, most of that is personnel, would be additional personnel. And that's really, to, any, anyone that puts something in the budget for increasing service levels or making some changes, it's really related to people. So, that's what, that's basically where that, that would be. Okay. And then we can go to revenues.
And tomorrow, you'll have a list of the...
Yeah.
...things you mentioned today.
Oh, right. Yeah, we'll talk about that when they talk about it.
Okay. Okay, so, Joe, this is the revenue page, right, right here?
Yeah, so, first page after that second tab, after the...
Summary tab.
Summary tab.
And if you could look on the, on the front page, you can see the summary of the revenues is that last year, we had eight million, twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifteen was our adopted revenue. And then, this year, we're putting in nine million, seven hundred and twenty-one, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which is an increase of one million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and twelve. But remember on that, seven hundred thousand of that is the Parsons. So, for an increase of twenty-one point two percent. So, it is a substantial increase in revenue, and I'll have Joe go through it, but as Nancy had mentioned, and when we do it on the state grants, basically, if you remember, our state grants, and now, it's been two years in a row, we did not fund various state grants, because we weren't sure if they were coming in, and both years, we did get those grants. We also very much did not fund the ECS at the level that they, they said they were going to give us. We also got not as much, but we got much more than what we said we were going to do. So, all indications right now that, that the state grants are gonna be stable. But I just wanna make sure, because sometimes we, we get, not we, but our legislative group, and they talk, is that it looks like our grants have increased nineteen percent on our state grants, but really, that's not the case. The state grants have actually gone down from one year to the next year, it's just that we didn't fund the grants at that level. So, it's not that state grants have gone up, because they actually have not gone up, they've gone down from this year to last, next year. It's just that we didn't fund them at that level. So, again, I just wanna be clear, when we say our number, our state grants went up nineteen percent, they really didn't go up nineteen percent. The state didn't give us nineteen percent more money, it actually went down, from what it's projected right now.
And that's, that is the estimated, if we go across it to the two eighteen, nineteen, estimated twelve months, that's what we were, that was the, the original number that we were supposed to get from the state.
Right, yes.
And we...
And then what's recommended. And Joe, on this page, he can go through. Joe, why don't you start at the beginning and go through it?
Okay. I'll skip the current taxes for the moment, and just do the rest of the tax categories, the delinquent taxes, interest in liens, and supplemental taxes. Basically, there's some, project, estimating or projecting some slight decline for next year in, in the delinquent taxes and the interest in liens, and we're holding steady on the supplemental taxes. Supplementals is the supplemental car tax, when you buy a car during a certain period, you get an extra tax bill for your new, your new vehicle. We had seen some, some good growth in that over the past couple of years, but based on our grant list, our twenty eighteen grant list, we don't see, think that that's gonna really grow that much next year. So, we're holding that steady, at the current level. License and permits, the big one there is the building permits, and last year, we got the large permit at the end of the year, came in in late May, for the complex stability on Route Four across the street from Birdyard. And that drove up, that up to nine hundred thousand dollars. We don't see anything like that coming in this year or next year at this point. We do see that we're gonna do better this year than we have, had budgeted, but on the prudent side, we, we kept it the same for next year. And under fines and penalties, we actually have a slight decrease. The court fine number is going down, and that's based on the trend that's been taking place. We had a substantial, we went through a couple of substantial fine payments for some of our zoning enforcement actions. We haven't seen that this year. Last year, we didn't see it, and this year, we're not seeing it. So, we, we're basically budgeting at a level that's consistent with the past three years. Interest earnings is a category that's been going up, and that's because of the interest rates have been going up. So, we had budgeted three thirty-five this year, we're looking at over five hundred, we're budgeting, projecting over, recommending over five hundred thousand for next year. Rates have now plateaued, and now we're starting to hear hints that rates actually might go down. That's good news, bad news. But on the interest side, it's bad news for us, but we're, right now, we're, you know, we're up over two percent on some of our, we're up over around two percent, slightly over two percent in some of our investments. Most of them are still below the two percent level, and some banks are hinting that they, they really wanna pull back on that number, because the Fed, Fed has stalled in their rate increase trajectory. The state, federal, and federal grants, what, as Kathy mentioned, what we're budgeting next year is what the governor had proposed in his budget, and what we've actually received this year for the, for most of the state grants. So, when you look at the two pilot numbers, that's the number we actually received this year, and that's what the governor proposed in his budget that we received next year. The same thing with the revenue sharing projects, five hundred and forty-five thousand, that's been consistent throughout, ever, ever since they started that program. Municipal stabilization grants, the same thing, what we've received this year, the governor's proposing for next year. And then the town aid roads, the three seventy-three. There's some other minor grants in there that are not dependent upon, necessarily depend, they're not large grants, they're not, depend, some of them aren't dependent upon state funding. We're keeping those fairly constant or consistent. One new item there, should note, is fire grants, about two-thirds of the way down that category, there's a line called fire grants. That's a safer grant that the fire department successfully got, and that is, is a grant that where the federal government is providing money, two-thirds of the cost of a firefighter. And that's how we were able to hire that ninth firefighter in the fire department. That's the amount of money we should be getting each year for that person. So, we'll get that, we're getting thirty, we're projecting thirty-five this year, we should get forty-seven next year, forty-seven the year after, and then about ten thousand the year after that, and then the grant goes away. So, basically, over the next three years, we should get in total slightly over about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Service chart is up, projecting an increase of about five percent. The big category there, the big driver there is the first category, the real estate conveyance tax. the big driver there is the first category, the real estate conveyance tax, going up about twenty-six thousand dollars projected for next year. Also in this category of note, you asked about West Farms Mall and the reimbursement. Again, about halfway down in that column, we have police services, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The majority of that, not all of it, but probably two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-five thousand of it is from West Farms Mall for the two police officers.
It's from West Farms?
It's from West Farms for the two police officers. One and a half officers plus the car. So we bill them quarterly, and they, they pay quarterly for that. So again, that's about two hundred and twenty of that, of that total. There is another grant, another, another charge. Burlington does pay us for help, a portion of, of the cost of the dispatcher because we do the regional dispatching. So there's another twenty-three or twenty-four thousand, that's for that. And then there's some miscellaneous monies that come in for pistol permits and licensing and stuff like that, that's included in there. But again, the majority of that money is the West Farms Mall.
Joe, could I just, before we go, the real estate conveyance tax, is there, I see this is now going to be the third year. At one point, it was back and forth. They took it back and they, it was recommitted. Are we pretty?
You know, you never know what they're going to do with that one.
They took it one, took it back one year and put it in something, another fee or did something.
Right. They, they, they've taken it, they've used it, they've increased it. A lot of what we're showing here is this historical trend with this. This is interesting because it's really based on the economy and your sales transactions and things like that that take place. But actually, did a lot of look at this, looking at this, because this is a very difficult one to forecast. And what we noticed is that there is a pattern with this. It's like we seem to spike up one year and then drop the next year and spike up. It's almost like, you know, if you were to look on a chart, it's just a series of peaks and valleys. And so we're just riding the peak and valley. If you've noticed, the projection for this year is six hundred and thirty thousand, but we dropped it back to five seventy-six because it's just, it's really, there's no consistency in this. I wish it, I wish it went like this, but it's actually going up and down like this. So we're riding the peak and valley with that one, even though we did build in an increase for next year.
Thank you.
On this, on the back page, there's just a couple of items. The other revenues is just miscellaneous revenues that come in. We traditionally budget that at fifty thousand dollars. Usually comes in around that. Sometimes, some years it's higher, some years it's lower. But we, it's, it's not a, a set number. It's, it's just really miscellaneous revenues that come through. And then finally, the West Woods contribution. This, when you look, remember in the West Woods golf course budget, there was a line for a contribution to the town. This is the contribution that we're estimating. And then finally, the fund balance appropriation or the fund equity appropriation that's built on your first page of seven hundred thousand for the Parson's purchase. That's the, all the grants except for the current taxes. Obviously, the current taxes is what, is what used to balance out, as you see on your first page. We have nine point seven million dollars in non-tax revenue, and we have a budget of a hundred and twelve million dollars. So the difference comes out of your taxes, and that's the hundred and two million, four sixty-two, eight hundred, just four point three percent increase over the current year. That's based on our grant list. Our grant list, we didn't have really, we had growth in our grant list this year. It wasn't, it wasn't tremendous growth. We went up about three point three percent. This shows on first page, right on the first page. It went up point three eight percent. We had some, we had a good growth in personal property, disappointing growth. We did have growth in motor vehicles, disappointing growth though. I thought it would come in higher. It has in the past come in higher than that. And then the real estate, what you're seeing with the real estate there is the impact of some of the court settlements that I mentioned last year. After the reval, we had twenty-seven lawsuits, people contesting their assessments, and they were, they weren't happy with our resolution of them, so they, they actually filed lawsuits against us. We settled twelve of them. And what eventually happens when you settle them is, you know, their numbers, one number, your number's a higher number, and you usually try to settle in the middle or somewhere that's agreeable to both. And of course, that reduces the grant list. So with, basically what happens is you see the impact both in the year that settlement occurs, and you also see it in your next year because now you've, you know, you're taking money off the grant list. So even though we had growth in the grant list, we had reductions, sizable reductions because of those twelve settlements. And so that held back the growth in, in the real estate. We still have another twelve to thirteen court cases to go. And as I mentioned previously, my guess is that probably three of them will go to, to sue, to try, actual trial. The rest of them will probably get settled.
And that's one of the things that is somewhat disappointing, and it seems like it's becoming more and more about how the assessment courts work. When you go through a reval, is that it's really some of these businesses, it's almost in their best interest to sue or threaten to sue because it seems like unless it's something really, really outrageous with the, with the businesses being outrageous or we're being outrageous, they, they want you to settle and they, they do it right in the middle. And so, you know, as a business, you're going to, how much, you know, you weigh it out of how much it's going to cost for your legal fees. But if you know you get, especially some of these big businesses, if you know that you're not, I don't think we, it's always a settlement, really. You don't, we only go to court three times because they always try to force you to settle, and it's just very, very costly. And, and then if you historically look at our grant list growth, you always see pretty much after reval years that you have lower grant list growth just because of this than you think you're going to have because you're doing all these settlements and things of that nature.
And the, and the big, ones that actually go to trial are usually the ones where the plaintiff believes that they're, they probably have properties in other towns, and so they believe that whatever the court rules in, in our particular case would impact the other cases. For example, CBS Pharmacy, if, obviously, they have CBS pharmacies all throughout the state of Connecticut. And, and so they'll more than hap, more than happy to bring you to court and actually go to trial with the hope that whatever's decided to trial in your case then gets applied to all their buildings throughout the state of Connecticut. So there are, you know, there are situations like that where the company has multiple locations throughout the state of Connecticut. They were willing to go to trial. And then sometimes, actually, what usually happens is the larger the discrepancy, the more likely you are to settle. The closer, the less, the lesser the discrepancy, the more likely you are to go to trial. The other disturbing trend that we're seeing is, or new trend, I guess, not disturbing, new trend that we're just seeing, is getting more residential properties filing lawsuits against us. Normally, those were, you could work those out prior to actually going to court. And we're actually seeing a lot more people suing, filing suit against us because of their appraisals and the residential side. So this year, we had, I think, we had five or six this year. We've had years, you know, there were, historically, you'd have, you never would see that. And it's past couple of revales, we started to see more and more happen.
Interesting. Go ahead, Bruce and Edward.
Okay. Joe, the increase, and I know that there's about fifteen, I, I think you said that there was twenty-seven suits, twelve you guys pretty much settled, and there's about approximately fifteen left. What do you put in from a budget perspective? Do you put in the old reval, or do you put in the new reval?
We put in the new reval, and then what happens is I have to make an adjustment. So I think we discussed this last year. You look at the bottom of this tax and budget worksheet page, you know, and you go to the, well, you look on this page here, and you see a hundred and two million dollars on the revenue page. And then you look on the front page, and if you look down under the section that says tax and mill rate, you see a tax levy of a hundred and three million dollars. The reason for the discrepancy is, is two things. One, we're not going to collect a hundred percent of the levy, so I have to factor in a percentage of what we are going to collect. And two, I make an adjustment for what we anticipate the tax loss to be for, for several components. One is the, actually, the first one is we do not factor in the elderly credits, elderly abatements that occur, because we don't know what they are yet. That's a, the deadline for filing those is in May. So right now, we give an estimate as to how much revenue we're going to lose because of that. We have the firefighter abatements, which also come up. That's a small dollar amount, it's like forty-five thousand dollars. And then we have to make an adjustment for the Board of Assessment Appeals, because right now, we're in that period where the Board of Assessment Appeals has not met yet. So we, so they haven't made any adjustments based on appeals that have come to them. And then fourth, we have to make an adjustment for anticipated court cases and adjustments throughout the year. So we build into that, those, into that, that hundred and three million dollars actually includes those adjustments, which right now, I believe I put a, but seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in adjustments right now that are including that number.
Thank you.
Joe, I think you partially answered my question, because you said that more residential property owners are taking us to court now, especially during revales. So would you say, compared to past revales, the total number of property owners is, is increasing?
They're suing us?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, are you saying that, are you asking how many, are we getting more lawsuits?
Yes, in total, both commercial and residential.
No, actually, it's holding steady. And the reason why, what I, what I think would have happened this year is we would have had a lot more lawsuits. We traditionally, we figure between twenty-seven, twenty-five and thirty lawsuits, or lawsuits filed against us after a reval. I think this year, there actually would have been more. But what we did is, before the grant list was settled, everybody, you should have received the property notice right after reval. It said, here's your old assessment, here's your new assessment. If you have any questions, you know, come in and talk to us. And a lot of commercials came in and talked to us. A lot of commercial industrials came in and did talk. And at that point, the assessor was willing to meet with them and talk to them and make an adjustment in exchange for them not filing another appeal, or not filing. So, so we, we basically were more proactive to try to head off these lawsuits coming up. And she was very successful in getting about seven, I think it was seven or eight of them to actually agree to that situation. So I, I'm not almost certain, but my guess would be that those eight, if they hadn't made that deal with us, they probably would have also filed lawsuits. So we, instead of looking at twenty-seven of them, we would probably have thirty-five of them next year, which would have been more. You know, and to answer your question, that would have been more, but we-
Right.
We were more proactive with it.
Because you were more proactive, you were able to-
We held it to the same numbers.
To keep it to the same number. That's great.
Other questions?
So where we are is that we went through everything that we were supposed to go through today. And then on Saturday, we usually, which we didn't do last year too, we did it on this day, we did the debt service, non-tax revenues, which we have just, which we just did. And then on Saturday, we, we wrap it up again. We talk about the, the town budget, the capital projects, the board of ed, and then we do the tax rate. So we've gone through everything at least once. And I think on Saturday, we're basically going to start looking at the tax rate. We have to, I think, review the capital again possibly, but we'll put that all into it. The Parsons property, we probably should talk about that with the fund balance. But I think we've gone through everything we need to do for Saturday to really hit the ground running to wrap things up.
And then the teacher retirement, we should make that up too?
Yeah, yeah.
Right. And I'll think about things.
Right.
Okay. And if there's, if there are anything else, any other questions anybody does right now for Joe or Kathy or?
Go ahead, she was talking something right where we were. So the backside of the general fund revenue sheet, and right near the top, under other revenues, what was going on in seventeen, eighteen? That was two hundred and twelve thousand, and then, but you had mentioned that you pretty much budgeted for fifty thousand. I'm just curious.
No, it's, the Board of Education, every year, when they close their year up, they carry forward some of their money. They encumber their money, and they carry it forward into the next year. And the way it shows up in the audit, in the audit report, the auditors have to show it, and you actually can see it in the financial statements. It's a part, it's a reservation of, of fund balance. So if you look at the fund balance number on the balance sheet, there's the unassigned fund balance, and there's an assigned fund balance. And that assigned fund balance is the board of ed's purchase orders or encumbrances, the money they're carrying forward into the next year. In sixteen seventeen, the board of ed supplied a number to the auditors as to what their encumbrances should be. And the auditors, for some reason, put more money into that reservation or that assignment of fund balance than was supposed to be there. So when the, we closed out the seventeen, eighteen year, we had this large amount of board of ed. We had, we had money that was assigned fund balance that should not have been assigned fund balance. So the only way to actually get that to rework itself through the system was to post it as either a, a revenue or a reduction of expenditure somewhere. I chose to put it in as a revenue item and just run it back. So it basically, it basically just runs back through the budget and goes back into fund balance. So it just frees it, takes it from the assigned category of fund balance and puts it into the unassigned category of fund balance. That's, that's what a hundred and seventy thousand of that is. I think it's a hundred and seventy-three thousand total. That was, was that way.
Other questions? Okay. Well, if anybody thinks of anything between now and then, please let them, let me, Joe, know.
And nine o'clock, we'll have coffee and some breakfast. And then we'll think about ordering some food as time goes on, and we'll have it delivered, brought in as we work through the day.
And as always, Joe, you'll be ready to-
We'll be able to-
Manipulate the-
Get the screen up and we'll do that.
Percentages and all of that.
Yep.
Whatever we want.
Yep. And if anyone needs any information-
I'll calculate.
Calculate. Thank you.
Manager?
Yes.
Can I have one request, and I'm not sure how easy this would be for Joe. The calculation that you come up with with the reserves of the general fund, is that something that you could either share with us, like that worksheet, how you came up with that calculation? Just so as we work through the budget, it's something that-
calculation of-
Right now, we're what, thirteen point six or fourteen point of the reserve?
A little over, yeah, I just turned my computer off. A little over fourteen.
A little over fourteen percent.
So you want basically what happens to the fund balance if you take money out?
I, I would like to understand how you come up with that calculation. So if we do do anything with the fund balance, how that's being calculated?
It's, it's-
It's complicated?
No, no. It's actually, I was going to say, it's very simple. You just take fund bal, unassigned fund balance. And I'll, I'll do it for you on Saturday, or I could do it for you whenever you want.
Well, you know what I would like? If you can give me an Excel spreadsheet that just says what we plug in, so, and you can send it to all of us, so we can at least fool around with that?
I could do that.
Thank you.
And we know right now, but by the end of the year, I think, wasn't it fourteen? I don't want to say fourteen. Don't, 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 you can do it in this then. But by, right now, the amount and what the expectation is as of June thirtieth.
Yeah.
It's higher than what we, it's fourteen, seven or something, so.
Right now, we're at thirteen, six. And I think what we're, I don't want to use this because it's, it's not, no. Right now, we're at thirteen, six. So basically, what, right now, our fund balance stands at fourteen point four million dollars. Our current year budget is a hundred and six point three million dollars. So our unassigned fund balance is thirteen point six percent. Now, what I'll do is I'll show you what, I'll, I'll give you a worksheet that'll show you all the variables, and you could, you know, you could play with it if you'd like.
Okay.
I actually did it, and I, I turned my computer off. I'd be happy to turn it back on. I, I don't know if I can get it on the screen, but I'll, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, if you just send it to us, we can-
Yeah, if you could send that before Saturday.
Yeah.
Tomorrow would be fine, yeah.
I'll send it tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
Procedural, I guess, or I heard you say, any questions, put it directly to Kathy or other staff. Do we go through you as chair? How is that best?
I think she can just go to you, call you.
Yeah.
If you want to-
If you're looking for information from-
I can't do anything now.
Yeah. If you're looking for information on the, for anything on the town side, for any of my staff people or anything, just send me an email or call me.
If you want something from the board of ed, call me.
Got you.
And then I'll go through Chris, because that's what I've been doing now. I email Chris with anything, any questions we have. And then-
Yeah, I just didn't want to over-
No, but then, and then anything Kathy puts together. We should be getting some information tomorrow from the board of ed, in which case it'll go out to everybody. I'll have it sent out to everybody. And whatever you, you can send out to everybody.
Yeah, and Joe will send out that chart.
Yes.
And I think someone, I forgot who asked, someone asked for us some information from Nancy Parent, so she'll, Bruce, she'll, the golf course stuff. And she can send that out to you too. That's, she has that. So I'll get that out for you tomorrow. I'll get that out for you tomorrow.
And that'll go to everyone, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
I move to adjourn, adjourn?
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions.